Followed by the pledge, which will be Supervisor Goodman. If you care to partake in any of these, please stand.
We thank you that this body still recognizes the need to invoke your presence and guidance. And for many, it's just a tradition, but for many of us who live here in Penale County, it's a daily experience of recognizing our insufficiency to deal with the challenges of life. And so, Father, we welcome you into this meeting. We ask you to grant wisdom and knowledge and discernment, and may the motives of this body be to do good for all. Because, Jesus, you said that the whole Bible boils down to two things: love God with all your heart, and if you do, you'll learn to love your neighbor as yourself. And it's pretty obvious we haven't done a very good job of that part of it. We've substituted religious attendance and ceremonies for the real substance of what you desired, God. And, Father, I pray for these leaders that their motives would be good and pure, and that they would desire to please you, which doesn't mean that we all agree on everything or anything, for that matter, but we all be driven to please you in what we do. And, Father, for the knowledge, those of us who just don't know about you but are getting to know you personally, to realize it's very rare when your will is done here in this world. And it's exceptional, but that's because you gave us free will. And, Father, I pray that we would use our free will to benefit one another, and may you grant that for this body. We ask it in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome to the Penale County Board of Supervisors, September 28, 2022, regular meeting. We are in session. First item up is discussion approval, disapproval regarding the 2022 Penale County primary election handling, follow-up by staff, after-action report, administrative review, process moving forward for the 2022 general election, and follow-up. Mr. Volkmer, did you want to say something here? Really?
With the caveat that I'm an attorney, so...
There you go, okay.
...relative. Good morning, Chair, Board. Ken Volkmer, Penale County Attorney. I wanted to provide two very brief updates before turning the floor over to Ms. Ross. With respect to the report that's being generated, there has been a rough draft that's been generated. There's some follow-up that needs to be completed. It is anticipated that on the October 12th board meeting, the full draft will be available for the board's review prior to that, and then the board can determine how they'd like to proceed. Again, it's, there's some follow-up of some additional interviews that need to take place, but it's getting very, very close, and we have been assured that by the 12th, we'll have that information. Second topic, board, I know a couple of the members have reached out to me. I know our sheriff's reached out to me. I know our recorder, Dana Lewis, has reached out to me. There are a couple potential election challenges that are potentially coming forward. One specifically revolves around ballot boxes, and one revolves around the ESNS machines. We are aware of those. We are actively researching those. I know Chris Keller and I have been personally spending time on it. We've, have been working in collaboration with other county attorneys across the state. We've actually worked with the other attorney who's bringing some of these concerns. Our intention is to get a formal opinion to this board, hopefully, again, by that October 12th date, so this board is aware of it prior to the primary. But I just want this board to be aware that we are aware of it. We are examining all the concerns that have been brought forward, and we're going to do our best to answer all of those questions, so you are in the best position possible to proceed forward. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. That was brief. I appreciate it. Ms. Ross.
Good morning, Chairman McClure, Vice Chairman Surti, Supervisors and Staff, Virginia Ross, Elections Director. With our update for this board meeting, poll worker training has started or should be underway of the first class. We did revamp the curriculum per the feedback we received from the public and the poll workers, and also redid the poll worker manual. We did a dress rehearsal and run-through of the training, and I feel that it's going to be a much improved class than what, and course than what was delivered prior to that. Ballots have arrived, so we do have our ballots. So as far as all our positions have been filled, but one position, and that is the second deputy director. In the meantime, we have brought over Geraldine Roll from the county attorney's office on special assignment. She is very familiar with election law. When I first became the recorder, she was my attorney, and she did go through election certification training. So she's there, working hand-in-hand with me on all aspects of the election to ensure our goal of having a smooth election as we can. So we're very lucky to have her there. In the meantime, we are preparing for our logic and accuracy tests. We've already put together a sample. We ran them on the machines. Everything tallies correctly. We did our own hand count after that. So we have, we're going to do another internal test. Then we have our internal LNA where the public comes. We test all the express vote machines, and the Secretary of State's coming on the 10th for their logic and accuracy test of the machines and the ballots. And, of course, just as a reminder, after the election, by statute, there is a mandatory hand count of the election by statute, a sample, the parties come observe. We've already got those people appointed to that hand count board. They draw the precincts per statute, and then they hand count the ballots to go back and test those results. We have met with the recorder in early voting. We had a meeting yesterday. We brought in someone from the early board, who is the board that removes the ballots from the early ballot affidavit and tabulate that, so we wanted to ensure that we're not doing double the work. That was done in the primary. We have hired an actual receiving board, so we will have two panels of that. When the ballots come over from the recorder's office to the elections department, then we will go and hand count everything that they have on their transfer log and make sure that it all matches before we take it into the early board. So we are creating extra processes to review for the election, and that's pretty much where we are now. The work continues. We're working every day, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Ross. When you said the hand count will occur after the tabulation, will the hand count occur prior to the canvas?
Yes.
Certification?
Yes, Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, it does occur before the canvas.
Okay. And then, the logic and accuracy test, how many ballots are counted or checked in the logic and accuracy test?
We are going to, we create a grid for every race and every machine to make sure that every yes tallies as a yes and every no, for example, on the propositions for retainment of judges, for the candidates, that we're going to create a comprehensive, I don't know if you want to call it like a Monte Carlo mathematical, comprehensive sample of that, and that's what we are going to use to create a pre-audited script and then go through every machine and test that it comes out the same. If not, then we would go and look at the programming or whatever at that point. But we've already done some tests on it, and so far, everything looks fine, testing.
So my question was, do you know the specific number? Do you run 100 samples through for that particular race or 1,000?
We would run, Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, we have 299 ballot styles. So at some point, we would have ran every ballot style that we have through the machines and the express votes to make sure that it tallies appropriately.
Okay, so each one, just each ballot style, just one time?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor, we are doing multiple tests.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Would you just, just for, so the public understands, 299 ballot styles, everybody says, oh, my gosh, what is that? Would you just please explain what that means?
Thank you, Chairman McClure. So, for example, in Kearney, they have the precinct of Kearney. Some people, because of precinct splits, may have, was one school district on a ballot and the other split may not, just as in where I live in Circle Cross Ranch, precinct, they precinct, some have the city on their ballot, some don't. It depends because of, we do have school district races. We also have town proposition. Town of Kearney does have a proposition, so you may be in the Kearney precinct, but there may be three ballot styles. You may not actually live in the city limits of Kearney, so you would not have that town proposition on your ballot. So you would have, in that precinct you go to vote for, there would be up to five different ballots, and the voter checks in, and we, the ballot judge, which is why they're getting trained today, will be sure to hand the voter the correct ballot.
Thank you. Supervisor Surti.
So I have a feeling that a lot of folks are going to speak at Call to the Public on this issue, and Chairman McClure, Chris Keller, we're, as a board, we're not supposed to really address Call to the Public individually, so would it be okay if Virginia would stay after and answer questions, if she could take notes on what they're about to say?
That would have to be offline, Chairman and Supervisor, and I guess it's really going to be up to Virginia, whether she has the time with her other duties going on, whereas she can do that, or if she's willing to just, you know, take the questions and then try to, you know, get back maybe at the next board meeting with any kind of responses that might be necessary at that time. But you are correct that at a Call to the Public, you are not to respond to the public's requests for questions.
Okay, thank you.
And my understanding is you are short-staffed today, and it's first day of training, and so you're only just a little busy.
Thank you, Chairman McClure.
Okay, any other questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh? No, I'm just checking.
I think some of the concerns and perhaps what Mr. Volkmer brought up is the issue of the certification of the machines and was the, are, they're tested, and there's this independent laboratory that tests them, and so on and so forth. Have you, have you already gone through that process, and is the laboratory properly accredited by EAC standards and the, and so on, and the HAVA Act? Have you gone through all that to make sure that you're in compliance?
Chairman McClure, Supervisor Kavanaugh, yes. Before the machines were ever purchased, they would have had to have been certified through the process you spoke of, and the Arizona Secretary of State also conducts those tests. They are the ones who certify from, once the EAC, then the Secretary of State conducts their test, and they determine which brands or equipment, if you will, can be used in the state of Arizona. So, yes, we would not have purchased those machines unless they had passed all of those tests.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Chairman.
Mr. Lou.
Can I just address two things? If, Ms. Ross, if you could, just for the public's information, talk a little bit about how we've ordered ballots this time to ensure that there'll be a sufficient number at the polling places. And then, heads up, as we've been trying to get the awareness out of the length of the ballots and the multi-sided pages potentials for some precincts.
Hi, yes, thank you, Chairman McClure, Manager, Mr. Lou. We, yes, we have talked about the ordering of the ballots. We did follow the state formula. It says at least 1%. We've ordered about 10% more, just because we're hearing a lot of early voters may go ahead and vote at the polls. Voter registration is still open. We don't know how many more people could register. People who aren't registered can go to the polls. So we have received the ballots, and we, I'm confident that we are not going to run out of ballots this time. The ballot is a two-card ballot, meaning page one and backside, card two, front, and potentially, I believe I addressed, if you are in Casa Grande, where the city has props and their schools, then you will have a front, back, and a front, back. And during the poll worker training, which has started part of our updates to train the ballot judges and the poll workers, is to make them aware of that two-card ballot and to ensure that the voter gets the correct front, back, front, back ballot style that matches, and when they put them in the box, that they're putting both cards in the ballot box.
Push the button.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Appreciate it. And there's no action there, so that was all information. We will move on. Item two is Call to the Public. And this is, those wishing to address the Penale County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. So first up, I have, who do I have? John Leggett?
Good morning, Chairman McClure, gentlemen.
And just to go back, just to please state your name and generally where you live.
John Leggett. I'm from Maricopa County.
Okay, thank you.
And I come to you as a simple man, humble man, who has seen the greatest crime ever committed in the history of this nation. I grew up in Massachusetts, where the cradle of liberty was, where the black-robed pastors took a stand and won the freedom of this nation. And to see what's happened, not in Penale, but in generally across the board, I just have to say, those machines have not been duly certified by an accredited company. That is basic, the HAVA Act has been violated, 644B of our statutes has been violated, and our Constitution has been violated. We have put on notice every state senator and state representative that they were not duly elected. We're going to take this further. We only have a month to get this done, but we're going to bring a racketeering, influence, and corrupt organizations complaint to bootstrap on what's happening in Georgia and in my home state of Massachusetts. So very blessed to be part of that, part of that team. Just want to say, you have a wonderful reputation down here for integrity, and I don't want to imply anything otherwise. But we do need to, all of us, we need to step up and hold our fellow citizens accountable. There's a large number of people, probably in this state, probably 500 people, who know exactly what happened in 2020. And we need to ask them and get them out of the darkness and into the light so that the next election, this one coming up, is not going to be corrupted. I'm a humble man, as I said. They asked the question, are you as smart as a fifth grader? And I'm not going to claim that I am, but a fifth grader could see through everything that's happened. You just scratch the surface in any of these issues, the mules, the certifications, the algorithms. It is as corrupt as anything has ever been in this nation. So bless you for taking this on. I hope and trust that the right thing will be done here in Penale. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have Karen, Karen Nelson. And as always, please state your name and generally where you...
Good morning. Karen Nelson, District Two, Santan Valley, Queen Creek. Today, I would like to make a few comments about an employee of Penale County. And let's see if you can guess who I am talking about. This person has a $50 million budget, close to 500 employees, and is responsible for an area that would pretty much cover the state of Connecticut. This person may or may not give you the shirt off their back, but they will donate their hat as a fundraiser. And if you've guessed Sheriff Mark Lamb, you would be right. So a few other things about Sheriff Lamb that some people may or may not know. In 2017, he found a need for incarcerated military veterans. He felt they would be better served if they were housed together with people that had similar problems and similar needs. He felt that they sacrificed for their country, so it was time for us to give them a helping hand. Therefore, the Housing Unit for Military Veterans was formed, in other words, HumV. Also, in, earlier this year, Sheriff Lamb was chosen to host the Law Enforcement Officer Hall of Fame, which was held in Toledo, Ohio. And co-founder Megan Stockenberger stated, "Sheriff Lamb embodies the true spirit of law enforcement. It could not have been more fitting to have him be so prominently involved in this important event." So very proud of our sheriff of Penale County there. Also, Sheriff Lamb has always brought, has brought to the attention of the country the disaster that is going on at the border. The border is not secure. He has had numerous interviews with AON, Newsmax, Fox News, Fox Business, numerous radio stations, and podcasts. He has brought forth the evil that is going on at the border with human trafficking, smuggling, children coming across without an adult, and also the fentanyl, the drugs that are being brought across. According to Sheriff Lamb, 50% of the nation's drugs come through Arizona. And I thank him for bringing the attention to the nation for this. I heard the other day that 300 people a day die from fentanyl. 300 people, that would fill an airplane. If we had an airplane crash a day, I'm certain that the authorities would do something about it. So in closing, I would like to thank Sheriff Lamb for his dedication to his office and also to the residents of Penale County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Could everyone please silence their phones? If not, we can call some kids in, and they'll shut them down. Those fifth graders, yeah, where are they? Come on. Okay. Next up is Reverend Mike Singer. And again, please state your name and generally where you live. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman McClure and members of the board. I'm Reverend Michael Singer. I live three miles north of here, where I've resided for nearly 19 years. I'm a 67-year-old Vietnam-era veteran. I come before you today not because I want to, but because I have to in an attempt to save my own life. I have sent a number of emails to all of you over the past months regarding the unconstitutional infringement on the fundamental private property rights of the landowners near the newly-constructed 10-acre sheriff's office shooting range. I come here today to communicate directly to you on the record. This ill-conceived facility was sighted in a general rural area not zoned for a shooting range and with no notification to any of the affected property owners. The project was done in secret, the current Board of Supervisors not even knowing about it. No other person or corporation could have built a shooting range at that location. Last week, the shooting started in earnest. On Wednesday and Thursday, the shooting continued until 9:00 p.m. Sheriff Lamb, who did reach out to me in response to my email, said they will be shooting as late as 10:00 p.m. The peace and quiet and solitude that I have enjoyed over the past 18 years has been destroyed by the operation of this facility. The nearby gunfire is extremely intrusive and intolerable and is triggering my painful and debilitating cluster headaches. Additionally, the value of my property has now been effectively destroyed. I know that you have received at least five notices of claims from surrounding landowners totaling many millions of dollars and held an executive session to discuss these claims. I have repeatedly reached out to Penale County demanding a buyout so I could purchase another property. I have gotten no response except from Sheriff Lamb, who says he is not responsible for the facility sighting and that I need to negotiate with the county. I don't want to move, but I am forced to if I want to continue to live. There is no way I can tolerate that noise for the rest of my life. No person should have to. I am sure that none of you would. The Arizona Private Property Protection Act states that whenever state and local governments take damage or diminish the value of private property, it is the intent of the act that the owner receive just compensation, either by negotiation or by an efficient and fair judicial process. I am here today demanding $500,000 from Penale County so that I can acquire a similar five-acre property and reestablish my home and farm at another location away from the noise. I will deed my current property to Penale County. I'm asking this board to direct the county attorney's office to enter into negotiations with me pursuant to the intent of the Private Property Protection Act. It is a matter of life and death for me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Chairman, before we go on, just for the record, if I can state that Mr. Singer did submit his comments for the record.
Yes, thank you. Oh, next, we have, I don't have a name. I just have one of three. Okay. I figured you'd know who you were, so. And again, please state your name and generally where you live. Thank you.
Good morning, Penale County Board of Supervisors. My name is Daniel Wood, and I'm a Penale County resident. I'll get right to the point. When the right to vote is violated, the laws created and enforced by elected officials can no longer be considered an expression of citizens' free choice and self-determination. As the court said in Westbury versus Sanders, "No right is more precious in a free country than that of having a voice in election of those who make the laws under which the good citizens we must live." Other rights, even the most basic or illusory, if the right to vote is undermined. Our rights in the state of Arizona have been undermined due to severe violations of our First and 14th Amendment rights, Electoral Due Process and Equal Protection Clause. In order for any type of voting machine to be used in Arizona lawfully, in Arizona, they have to be certified by the federal laboratories. These laboratories must be accredited by the Election Assistance Commission. Under the Help America Vote Act of 2002, to properly certify all types of voting machines and tabulators. The two laboratories and/or government contractors which have issued machine certifications of voting machines in this state were not in contract to do so, and therefore, any federal voting machine certification is void. These labs put themselves forward as if they were approved and legal to do business. The labs performed a service and accepted payment for service and issued certifications to imply that our critical infrastructure was safe. States depended on this to begin state-level due diligence. The False Claims Act, 31 U.S. Code 3729, protects from government contractors falsely billing the government for services while they are not compliant with laws, rules, and regulations. The federal machine, the federal machine certifications are false. The laboratories that issued certificates for voting machines were not even in contract to do work. These contracted labs have committed consumer fraud by advertising falsehoods and misleading the public that the voting machines were certified according to law and that their companies were accredited, and they continue to defraud the state of Arizona and the people. 18 U.S. Code 912, whoever falsely assumes or pretends to be an officer or employee acting under the authority of the United States or any department, agency, or officer thereof, and acts as such, shall be fined under this title or imprisoned, not then more than three years, or both. In the court Reynolds versus Sims, the foundational decision of voting rights, the Supreme Court held that any alleged infringement of the right of citizens to vote must be carefully, meticulously scrutinized. The court further quoted Yickroke versus Hopkins, "The fundamental right to vote protected by the Equal Protection Clause is also a liberty interest protected by substantive Due Process Clause." In court case, Griffin versus Burns, 1978, held... In court case Griffin versus Burns, 1978, held that the Constitution confers upon the states the power to control deposition of contest over elections, state and local officials. To my Board of Supervisors, you have the power to right these wrongs. Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I see Paul Rice, please. And please state your name and generally where you live.
Yes, my name is Paul Rice. I'm a citizen of Maricopa County in Phoenix. I have a package for each of you. Okay, there's names on them for each of you. Yes, I'm coming as a citizen from a place of respect also and humbleness, but also in a position of very strong confidence in what I'm about to tell you. I'm part of a small group of citizens. We've been studying election law in the state of Arizona for about 18 months now, since right after the 2020 election. And the material that's in your pamphlets there will give the specifics. I don't have time to go over it. But as a follow-up to Daniel, I'd just like to say that you do have it in your power to take action here and not use the machines. And I don't mean to imply that anything has been done wrong here in the county. This is not so much a local issue, but it is a federal one, in the fact that the laws have been violated at a state level. But the protections that were put in place in which these laws pertain to have not been put in place because of the lack of accreditation of the labs, which were put in place as a firewall to protect the people from some of the things that we've been hearing about with fraud and et cetera. This is not about fraud. This is about statutory codified code in Arizona's revised statute, and I have it right here. If I could just indulge for a second. 16-442B says, "Machines or devices used at an election for federal, state, or county offices may only be certified for use in this state and may only be used in this state if they comply with the Help America Vote Act of 2002, and if those machines or devices have been tested and approved by a laboratory that is accredited pursuant to the Help America Vote Act of 2002." So what I have here and included in your packets are accreditation certificates. These are invalid, issued to SLI compliance by the EAC. They're signed by the wrong person. They're not good for three years. They're only good for two, according to the Voting System Testing Lab. In addition, there's a reference to Code 52, which gives them the permission to extend accreditation to these labs that look at the voting machines as long as they want. That is not true, according to the manual, which is under law. The EAC manual states two years has to be renewed. That has not been done timely. So I bring this to your attention also, because we have put in a records request with the Elections Department for a copy of the contract that exists between ESNS and the county. And when I get that, we'll be able to look at it a little closer, but it's our understanding that each of the counties do contract with ESNS individually, and inside those contracts requires an accreditation of the labs that certifies those machines, which would mean those contracts have been violated. So I think that's it. Generally, I just think all counties in the state of Arizona, this is subject to, this is not particular to any one county, and I'm not even sure that the counties are aware of some of the violations that have occurred because of the lack of the Secretary of State's Office to do their job and oversee, really, what is their responsibility in the elections. Also included is the Elections Manual verbiage that pertains to the certifications themselves of the machines, which we're trying to get from the Secretary of State's Office, to show that the changes that have been made since the original certificate, which was 2019, was issued, have been approved by the VSTL. We cannot seem to secure that.
Can you please wrap up?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Next is Michael Schaefer. And please again state generally where you live.
Chairman McClure and Supervisors, thank you. My name is Michael Schaefer, from Maricopa County as well. And we, as a group, these three of us, are here to help. A lot of times, people aren't exposed. We've got thousands of hours reviewing these situations and circumstances that have been shared with you today. There is a small smidgen of that evidence and that information in those packages, and we could fill a truck and bring it in to add to that. And I guess we're also here in part of stimulation, encouragement from Jim O'Connor, Corporation Commissioner, who sent a letter out to all the voting supervisors in the states. This information applies to essentially every state in the country, which is between 24 and 34 states that have adopted the HAVA Act. And it's very simple. It's like an Achilles' heel of our elections, where a law's been violated, and laws are designed to, if there's just a smidgen of problem, that people need to make decisions relative to the elections that the people hold. And so I really come representing the people, and I have a question for the people. How many of you are concerned about the voting machines?
Please address the board, not the...
How many people, by a show of hands, would be concerned about the voting machines and what they've done to our elections? So I would ask, is there any level of concern, as you begin to investigate this, that you avoid all risk in our people's elections? DHS CISA has published a statement, maybe you've seen it, maybe you haven't, about multiple vulnerabilities in these voting machines. I come from the standpoint, I own an accredited test lab. I've been accrediting test labs to the same standards that these labs accredit themselves to, ISO 17025. I know the process. I know what's involved. And I certify devices for the Federal Communications Commission and the Department of Homeland Security. If I misrepresent that, there's a lot of trouble for me, and those devices that I claim to have certified are not certifiable. Those certifications would be null and void. And so today, our ask is for the board to consider eliminating these voting machines entirely, setting an example, not only for Pinell, for Arizona, and for the country. All eyes are on us, the leaders and those involved in these elections, to see what we are going to do and how we're going to operate, given the information, ample information. Saturday, you'll be getting an invitation to an event hosted in part by Jim O'Connor, Liz Harris. I'm part of that. And we will have about four hours of subject matter expert witnesses to testify to many issues related to these voting machines, not just the one that we brought today that we've specialized in analyzing. So I thank you for your consideration, and so we would ask for paper ballots and a hand count and no machines. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Are there others that wish to address the board? I'm going to guess there probably are.
I'm Noel Rec from Casa Grande. First, in regard to Agenda Items 23 and 24, the performance reviews of Ms. Kennedy and Mr. Liu, I'd like to commend them both for their very courteous and professional manner in the interactions that I've had with them. I much appreciate that. Now for something I wish didn't have to keep being addressed. Last month, there was a presentation for the board from Mr. Conda regarding best practices in governance. I imagine he was well compensated for his work. While most of it dealt with the inner workings of the board, some of it, if indirectly, dealt with call to the public, the reason he was contracted in the first place. Some of the concepts he touched on were building trust, personal behaviors and conduct, seeking out, engaging, and listening to owners/customers, discipline, appropriate versus unacceptable behaviors, honoring and respecting others. At the last meeting, I spoke to these concepts regarding call to the public and offered suggestions to make it better for all involved. I thought I did so in a polite, thoughtful, professional manner and included scenarios that I felt the board and audience could relate to. Chairman McClure, I think you enjoyed being a part of that. My intent was to present the suggestions in a non-adversarial manner, hopefully paving the way for an even more constructive relationship between myself, my fellow constituents, and the board. If I may, I would like to ask for a response to my suggestions from the board, perhaps through my supervisor, Mr. Miller. When finished, I reflected on the board's reaction in Mr. Conda's presentation and my remarks. Did the county get its money's worth? Here's my conclusion. There are three board members who have taken this to heart and are making a genuine effort to engage and listen to their constituents. There is one member I can assess, because he's been physically absent from recent meetings. And despite this being the subject of much discussion, there is one member who still just doesn't get it, who won't show speakers who come before the board the common courtesy of intently listening to them. Vice Chair Sertie, at first, I took your unprofessional behavior personally, but after further analysis, I've determined that I'm not the only one to receive this type of treatment. I watched you over the course of several meetings, as you continually engaged with your computer screen rather than the speakers. What could possibly be on that screen that is more important than the speakers who have taken the time and effort to appear before the board? A prime example occurred at the last meeting when, in act of self-aggrandizement, you questioned Virginia Ross about adding a footnote to the two-sided ballot, instructing voters to flip the ballot over, something she had already covered. Obviously, you weren't listening when she did so. Why do you continue to engage in this behavior? It's not a good look for you or the board. As a retired public servant, I know if I had engaged in your behavior with the students, athletes, and parents I worked with, I would have been quickly disciplined, if not terminated. Vice Chair Sertie, being called out, which I truly take no pleasure in doing, you have the opportunity to respond, and I imagine you will. I promise to stand here as a man and listen to whatever you put forth. I won't tune you out, and I'll look you square in the eyes as you speak. To do anything else would be hypocrisy. I wish to leave my remarks with Ms. Kennedy for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Rec. Are there any others that wish to address the board? Mr. Wolf.
No response?
Not yet. The response will come at the end of the call to the public, just as record.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the board, and the public. Douglas Wolf, Pinell County Assessor. I'm wearing two hats today, as a public official and as a private citizen. It's amazing, I can do both.
I don't see the hats, I'm sorry.
It's all right, while they're invisible, but they're there for the people who are concerned. I've come to speak today about Proposition 130. In a couple of weeks, the ballots will drop, and this is something that's near and dear to my heart, and I'm hoping everybody will vote for it, and that's why I'm here to speak about it. When I became assessor in 2013, took office in 2013, quickly became aware of an exemption that had been taken away for disabled veterans in Arizona by the courts. It was a simple technical language thing, but the court said it didn't provide equal protection. And so if you're 100% disabled, veteran or not, you do get an exemption for property taxes. If you're a veteran with a service-related disability in Arizona, but it's less than 100%, the court voided those percentages of exemptions. So for instance, if you're injured in combat and you are 50% disabled, you wouldn't get a 50% exemption, as you would have for 40 years after World War II, when it was first put in the law. So for the last 10 years, I and my fellow assessors have been trying to get this through the legislature, to get it on the ballot. We succeeded this year. It's Prop 130, and not one argument in the ballot, the thing you got in the mail about your ballots and the propositions, no one made an argument against it, a lot of arguments for it. And you think to yourself, well, this should be just a layup, you know, everybody's going to vote for this. But the history of Arizona voters, if they see the words "property tax" in a proposition, they tend to think, oh my God, my taxes are going to go up, so they automatically check off no. So I'm asking you, as my fellow electives here in Arizona, and all the members of the public, talk to your friends, tell them this is a good thing for Arizona, it's a good thing for veterans who have sacrificed for all of us, so that we can be here today, speaking freely, in an open forum, and blessed by God for all the other freedoms that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Are there others? Yes, ma'am. You could read my mind.
I am Dia Padisky, and I'm from Pinell County. Commissioner Sertie, the district specifically, and this will be really brief. I just want to say, I believe in the fairness of our elections. I believe that there are people who believe in that, and that I do not want the board to believe that the only representation here today is people who want to get away with the voting machines and all that. There are many people who disagree with that, and I want to represent them to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others that wish to address the board?
Roberto Ravellis, resident of Gold Canyon. According to credible recent polling, inflation and the economy are top concerns for likely Arizona voters, followed by reproductive rights and threats to our democracy. Of the top concerns, here at the Board of Supervisors, the economy and threats to our democracy have demonstrated been the most prominent concerns. While call to the public occasionally gives Pinell County's taxpayers a glimpse into the world of competition between so-called conservative anti-tax legislators and wild-spending liberals like myself, seldom do we witness an open debate whereby taxpayers can discuss the real world of public finance. Instead, the Board of Supervisors' agenda ensures use of the consent agenda that permits a quick run for precious federal dollars, a tactic that avoids uncomfortable discussions surrounding an Arizona economy structured to ensure that Americans promote the general welfare, as our Constitution preamble states. Transparency in our county funding issues would reveal the uncomfortable truth that Arizona consistently remains among the top 10 states most dependent on federal assistance, currently receiving about $1.72 for each dollar in tax paid. Any one of you supervisors can place discussion of these topics on the agenda, so that the public can learn which candidate for local, state, and federal office genuinely and responsibly represents the public's needs. Nonetheless, I applaud the Board of Supervisors for promoting Pinell County's economy by securing much-needed federal funding provided by President Biden's lawfully-elected administration, the American Rescue Plan, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the Inflation Reduction Act, the CHIPS and SCIENCE Act, all benefiting Arizona's economy and general welfare. Roads, bridges, airports, wildfire prevention, water supplies, high-speed internet, electric vehicle industry, semiconductor manufacturing, shout-out to Supervisor Goodman on that one, coronavirus state fiscal recovery, expanded affordable health care with reduced cost of high-priced drugs with a cap on Medicare-related medications. All of these federal funds touch everybody's lives and support Pinell County as a desirable place to raise a family, grow a business, and improve everybody's quality of life. As we approach the general election, remember that all of the above-mentioned programs support our county and received a yes vote from all of Arizona's Democratic congresspersons, while all of Arizona's Republican congresspersons voted no. Let's erase our recent election fiasco, motivated not by partisan doctrinaire ideology, but by enlightened self-interest for our families, communities, economy, and threatened democratic republic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ravellis. Are there others that wish to address the board? Going once, going twice, sold. Call to the public's over now. I've had Supervisor Miller called out, Supervisor Sertie called out, Supervisor Miller. I'll go by seniority here. Not any slam there, just simply, you know, you were first.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The last email I received from Mr. Rec was on September 7. I responded on September 9. Hello, Noel. Sorry for the slow response. Anyway, I thought I addressed his emails, and I've not heard back from him. But I did at the very end of the email say, "Take care, and remember, my office is always open. So if there's more that Noel would like to discuss, he certainly can stop by. I'm happy to talk." So the last correspondence I had email-wise, I responded to on September 9.
Okay. Supervisor Sertie, I believe you're up.
Yes, I respond to every citizen, every phone call, every request I get from District Five residents. So Mr. Rec purports that he was a teacher and a coach, which is why school boards are so important these days, to monitor what kind of teachers and coaches we have. Hopefully, back... Hopefully, back then, he had a way different attitude than he has now and doesn't try to, didn't try to influence the kids negatively. So being a teacher, he would have been aware of things like ADHD and OCD, and that not every kid responds to a teacher talking at them incessantly, boringly, and they're doing different things, their minds are going different ways. And those kids grow up into being adults, and they function differently, they're doing several things at once. Just because they're not looking at you, they hear every hateful word you say. So there's a different way to look at that. And so, yeah, making that 100-mile round trip for three minutes to, to spew that, I mean, that's, that's your prerogative. And talking about hypocrisy and courtesy, we have three professional sports teams here in the valley, and we play teams from Canada. And before those games, they play the national anthem of both countries. And we fought a revolution so that we didn't have royalty and have to listen to the British National Anthem. So you can sit there like an ass and not stand up for the Canadian National Anthem, but it's kind of courteous to do that, just like, just like we kind of do for the, for the invocation here. So that's my thoughts on it.
Okay. Thank you. No others to call out, we'll move on. Item three, discussion approval disapproval of a proclamation of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclaiming Saturday, October 8, 2022, University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Day in Pinal County. The presenter would be Ann Lassen, Horticulture Agent. Good morning, Ms. Lassen.
Good morning. On a much lighter note, I'm from the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension in Pinal County, and we spend all of our time being that outreach arm of the university to improve the lives of all of the residents of Pinal County.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the microphone a little more so we can, thank you.
It's short. There we go. So we are all about improving the lives of every resident in the county through education, families, and strengthening families, getting more education, you know, I focus on horticulture, of course, and helping that to improve the lives. So I would like to read this proclamation. Are you ready for that? Did you want that?
No, we're not ready. Apparently, I'm being told, no, I'm not ready for that.
Okay, you're not ready for that then?
I read over here. She's in charge.
Okay, that's my intro.
So, okay, we'll go there. So I'm going to ask the board if you have any questions. Hearing none.
No questions about Cooperative Extension?
Go figure.
You love us, that's why.
We just love you, it's great. So, okay, so I'm, so I'm going to ask for a motion here to proclaim October 8th as University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Day?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number three as presented, and with that, I'd like to hear.
We will.
Okay.
So I have a motion.
I'm a little anxious to give that, too.
I'm just following orders, I'm, no, I'm sorry. So, okay, I have a motion, I have a second?
I'll have a second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Now, Ms. Lassen, would you please read the proclamation?
Okay. Can you hear me well? Whereas the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Pinal County, is the outreach arm of the University of Arizona and brings the university to the people, and whereas the Cooperative Extension's mission is to engage with people through applied research and education to improve lives, families, communities, the environment, and economies in Arizona and beyond, and whereas Cooperative Extension Field Crop System provide, program provides research and resources to Pinal County's agricultural community, and whereas community, Cooperative Extension Master Gardeners are university-trained volunteers who serve as community educators, providing research-based information on environmentally responsible gardening and landscaping to the public, and whereas Cooperative Extension has developed and provided programs that promote strong, healthy families, and whereas Cooperative Extension demonstrates outstanding leadership and tireless efforts in addressing nutrition education and physical activity through expanded food and nutrition education program, diabetes prevention program, and Arizona Health Zone, and whereas Cooperative Extension 4H gives youth that extra edge for life success by offering numerous opportunities to develop leadership, responsibility, citizenship, and other life skills, and whereas Cooperative Extension provides innovative programming including strengthening families, parent education, and financial literacy programs, and whereas Cooperative Extension is committed to delivering high-quality, relevant education programs and information to Pinal County citizens and communities, and whereas community, Cooperative Extension also provides many vital programs and services to the community for young children, including developmental, sensory, oral health education and screenings, and childcare health consultations, and whereas Arizona Project Wet develops water stewardship and STEM literacy by providing teachers professional development that evolves instructional practice and deepens content knowledge, directs students' outreach that delivers or extends classroom learning and community engagement, and whereas support for the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Pinal County, and continued coordination and collaboration among federal, state, and local governments are vital to ensure sustainability as the state's premier non-formal educational network. We, the County Board, Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclaim October 8, 2022, as University of Arizona Cooperative Extension Day throughout Pinal County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize the Cooperative Extension for the significant impact they have made to their commitment to delivering high-quality, relevant education programs and information to Pinal County citizens and communities. Proclaim this day, 28th of October, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Lassen. And don't go anywhere because we're going to do a group photo after the next item.
Okay. And I am going to leave you some flyers about that if you'd like to distribute them.
Terrific, thank you. Next, we have item four, which is a discussion approval disapproval of a proclamation of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclaiming October 2nd through October 8th as, 2022, as 4H Week in Pinal County. And the presenter is, can't be the same person.
It's not.
It's not. I'm saying, what?
I changed really quickly.
Boy, you, wow, you know, it was amazing.
Drunk an inch and a lot of other changes.
So please let us have your name. I'm sorry, it's not?
Absolutely, no, it's not. I wasn't expecting to speak this morning, but, good morning, and thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. My name is Esther Turner, I'm a program coordinator with the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension and the 4H Program. And I've got with me Asher Gonzalez, I always butcher her last name, who will be speaking once the proclamation has been considered. But first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about 4H. 4H is the leading youth development in the United States. There are over 6 million members across the nation. What makes 4H unique for other, from other youth programs is that we program for the spark of the youth, we follow their interest, we provide youth, youth adult leadership throughout the program, and try to find a way to connect the members with one another. Belonging is a very important piece that our youth need in anything they do, and so 4H is unique in that, that's one of our top goals. In Pinal County, it has grown, 4H has grown a lot, and it is continuing to grow. This year, we have an outstanding record book member who, who is Asher, who will be going to Georgia, Atlanta, Georgia, to represent the Pinal County 4H. She was our top record book entry this year, and so we're really proud of her, and so she will be the one that will read the proclamation once it's considered. National 4H is recognized across the United States, October 2nd through October 8th. On October 8th, we will be highlighting a lot of the 4H programs, a lot of our 4H youth, who will be out at Cooperative Extension Day demonstrating some of their projects and talking to the public about what 4H is. So we would like you to consider reading the proclamation and approving it.
Okay, thank you. So I will go here, and I, again, following along what I'm told to do, ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a proclamation declaring October 2nd through the 8th, October 8th, 4H Week in Pinal County.
Okay, I have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Now, Asher Gonzalez, would you please read the proclamation?
The proclamation, sorry. Okay. Whereas 4H youth across the nation are keeping a green by leading efforts to solve problems in their communities, raising awareness about environmental issues, and make a difference in their futures. And whereas 4H is one of the largest youth development organizations in Arizona and the largest in the nation with 6 million youth people, and whereas 4H in Arizona provides non-formal education programs and where, and experiences for more than 17,000 youth, young Arizonans. And whereas 4H, as part of the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, is a program where youth leads through opportunities that provides them hands-on experiences in 4H's mission, mandates of science, engineering, technology, healthy living, and citizenship. And whereas 4H youth will be members of all programs advisory and program activity committees at the state and local levels, and whereas 4H has connected youth and their communities with the innovative research and researches of our nation's 106 land-grant universities and colleges more than 100 years. And whereas 4H brings opportunity and belonging to all kids, and whereas National 4H Week celebrates the opportunity for all youth, and whereas we believe that the power of young people, we set that every child, we, yeah, every child has valuable strengths and real influences to improve the world around us, and whereas we celebrate 4H Week, impacting kids today and tomorrow. Now, therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim that the period between October 2nd and October 8th, 2022, is Pinal County 4H Week throughout Pinal County, and encourage all citizens to believe in the power of 4H.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. So now, it's picture time. Group picture.
If I may?
You may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do want to tell you, I have the pleasure of having these folks as neighbors at our complex in, in Casa Grande, and I so support everything they do. Ann's doing a fantastic job with her gardener and really getting the word on how to use water wisely in, in Arizona. The 4H program is one of those programs that teaches a whole lot of things, but I think the thing that really does teach that, that doesn't get the credit that it should, is it really kind of gives them an, an example of how capitalism works. They have to keep their books, they have to know how much they put into their animal, they have to. And I think it's so important to, those soft skills that don't get taught at our schools are taught in programs like this. And, and so, anyway, I just wanted to give them a little shout-out, and happy that they're my neighbors. Okay.
All right. Well, let's do a group picture.
There you go. There you go, that's good. And looking right here, and three, two, one, and big smiles, there we go. And get one with the dog in it, and there we go.
All right. Next, we have item five, discussion approval disapproval of a proclamation of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclaiming, proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Pinal County. I have Mr. Wong, Barry Wong, Executive Director of the Governor's Office of Equal Opportunity as the presenter. And a very dapper Mr. Wong at that, yes.
Good morning, Chairman McClure, members of the board, Mike Cruz, Pinal County District Administrator for District Three, representing Supervisor Steve Miller's office. I come to you today, just over a month ago, Governor's Office contacted us requesting to proclaim the month of September 15th to October 15th Hispanic Heritage Month to honor and celebrate the diversity and the great people of this great state. When they called to request this, I took it very seriously. As a son of an immigrant, this was very important to me. My father came to this country 60 years ago legally and migrated here, became a naturalized citizen, went to school, taught himself English, went to college, and had a great career. His story, like mine, is a fine example of the American dream, and today's proclamation is a reflection of our commitment as a state and a country to honor the diversity of the great people, not just Arizona, but of America. As a Hispanic, I'm proud to say I'm a proud American, a patriot. We love our country, we love the freedoms, the liberties, and the opportunities this great nation presents to all of us. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome and present Mr. Barry Wong, the Executive Director from Governor Ducey's office from Equal Opportunity. Mr. Wong?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cruz, for that kind introduction. And, Mr. Chairman, Chairman McClure and members of the Board of Supervisors, it's, it's an honor for me to be here in Pinal County. It's a beautiful drive, and what a beautiful facility you have. Thank you for having me and for the opportunity to represent our governor, Doug Ducey, before you. Throughout the year, Governor Ducey recognizes many communities and special occasions to reflect the great diversity of this state, as Mr. Cruz indicated. This month, the governor is highlighting our community of Hispanic heritage and has proclaimed the month as Hispanic Heritage Month, and he would ask me to convey his message in the form of a proclamation, which I would be honored to read. Before I do that, I want to thank Pinal County and the leadership. As you know, Governor Ducey is winding down his eight years of service to this great state, and it's, it was an honor for him and is an honor for him to work with the leadership, you, and your respective cities in helping to diversify the economic base through factories, car, trucks, and now the semiconductor supplier factories, manufacturing. So he asked me to convey that to you, and it was, it has been a pleasure for him to work and partner with your community.
Thank you. Before you read the proclamation, though, I've got to follow my orders.
Yes, of course, of course.
So, back to, so is there any questions for Mr. Wong? No questions? Okay. May I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proclamation of the Pinal County Board of Supervisors proclaiming September 15th, 2022, through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month here in Pinal County.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Wong, would you please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Message from the governor. State of Arizona proclamation. Whereas for more than a century, Arizona has celebrated a diverse culture, and today the Hispanic community makes up nearly one-third of the state's population, and whereas the Hispanic community is a dynamic, valued part of our society, and whereas with an entrepreneurial spirit, a strong work ethic, and an unwavering belief in the American dream, the Hispanic community has shown to be a vital contributor to our economy. And whereas the prosperity of our state and nation is closely tied to the success of our citizens, of Hispanic heritage, who are a significant and growing segment of our population, and who contribute in every aspect of Arizona life, while preserving- our population, and who contribute in every aspect of Arizona life, while preserving the unique customs and traditions of their ancestors. And whereas Hispanic individuals have earned our nation's highest military decorations and played a significant role in our academic, scientific, legal, political, and artistic communities. And whereas Hispanic culture shapes the Arizona experience and influences our art, literature, music, food, and faith, thereby enriching our state. Now, therefore, I Douglas A. Ducey, Governor of the State of Arizona, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteen, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage the citizens of Arizona to celebrate the talents, culture, and spirit of Hispanic heritage. Signed, Douglas A. Ducey, Governor of the State of Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
I'd like to present this, Mr. Chairman, to you and the members of the board.
We, can we do that in a picture?
Yes, please.
Okay. Like my, one of my favorites, Count Basie said, "One more time once."
And, three, two, one. Three, two. Very nice.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next up, item six, presentation of certificates of service to employees for twenty, twenty-five, and thirty-five years. Mr. Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we do have one for thirty-five years. He's not present today. We have seven, and I believe two are here, one I'm not sure. So, but let me first honor those who aren't able to be here. And our first is Amelita Waddle for the Pinal County Sheriff's Office. She's been here twenty years and is currently an administrative manager. And then we have, our thirty-five year is Joe Ramirez in Public Works, and he is currently a highway superintendent. And we have Nathan Little in Community Development, who is currently a building inspector, who's been here twenty years. And then we have Gabe Villanueva in IT, who's our audiovisual engineer, who's been here twenty years. So thank you to all of them and congratulations, and thank you for your years of service.
Robert, I see you back there.
If you don't mind, quick indulgence, but I'm not Gabe Villanueva. But I do want to just extend my congratulations to him. He's done a lot of work, many for everyone in this room. He does us well in IT, and I'm very proud of his service and look forward to his continued growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
You look a little bit like Gabe, but not, not exactly.
I think, I think his hair is a tad darker. Just... Sheriff Lam?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, a point of privilege, if I could just say, I want to thank Amelita, Matt Hall, who's at the jail, one of our lieutenants, Mike Villa, one of our detectives. I, I don't think it's any wonder that in this day and age, when a person does twenty years at a sheriff's office, they deserve more than kudos. I think they've done an amazing job. Amelita putting up with us, making sure our checks are right every week. That's a hard job with so many employees. You know, Matt, what he's done at the jail, and the, the experience and the wisdom and just the personal touch that he brings to the job. And Mike Villa, obviously, been around a long time in patrol, currently a detective. Just want to thank those guys personally for all the work that they've done, for how they've represented the sheriff's office, for how they've represented the county, and frankly, for how they've served the people of this county. I'm very grateful to all of them. So, just wanted to publicly thank them.
Thank you. Mr. Billingsley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it goes without saying that the level of commitment that these individuals represent on the board provided over the years and continue to provide for, for Pinal County. In particular, Mr. Little is listed for twenty years of service. And I, I just, on behalf of Todd and I, wanted to stand up and thank him for his service. And as shown by not, him not being present today, he's out on, on the road right now doing building inspections to try and keep up with the fastest-growing entity in, in Arizona. So, thank you to, to Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. Anybody else?
So the sheriff was able to confirm that Mike Villa isn't here today, but he has been with us twenty years as, and is currently a deputy sheriff. And then we do have two that are, I think, are going to be present, but my list isn't always accurate. If they're going to be here to be honored and say a few words. Laura Navarro from the county attorney's office has been with us for twenty-five years. I see Mr. Volker.
So I'm very happy to be able to say a couple of nice words about Laura, because she fills a very important role in our office. And I say this with all sincerity. After being there about twenty years, we promoted her, and she is now a supervisor. And in her supervisory position, she has to walk that very fine balance where, you know, management always thinks we come up with brilliant ideas. And we say, hey, this is what we're going to do. And Laura's the one saying, yeah, but. Think about how it impacts our people. Think how it's impacting the people that are actually doing the work. And she is that, that little conscience that maybe sits on her right shoulder. And it's such a valuable role, it's such a dicey role, because she's sort of going against the mainstream. We're like, no, this is what we want to do. And she's like, but, just, just think about this. It's such a very valuable role. It takes a very strong person to do that. So I'm very happy that we can acknowledge her today. And I'm hoping you all take a picture with her and we can join in. And just, everybody join in celebrating her twenty-five years that she's dedicated to our community and keeping us safe.
Thank you. Ms. Navarro, do you have anything you want to say, or you just want to just be quiet and just stand there?
Of course, she's quiet.
If I, if I were you, that's what I'd want to do. I just wanted to stand there, so.
I do appreciate being able to work for the county for twenty-five years. It's been pretty amazing. I've been with this office for twenty-three years, and I'm very happy where I'm at. I love my staff, and it's been great.
It's great. Well, thank you very much for your work for the county. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, but don't go anywhere, because guess what? It's picture time.
Yeah, we have, we have one more before we do the group photo. I believe, is Matthew Hall here, Sheriff? I don't know if you'd...
There he is.
Yep. Matthew's been with us for twenty years and is currently a lieutenant in detention.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, I already talked about Matt. I don't know if you want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you. It's been a privilege. It continues to be a privilege for me.
Thank you very much.
Can y'all hear me?
No.
Just want to let everybody know, it's been a privilege to work for Pinal County for twenty years, and I couldn't think of a better place to work. And I appreciate everything that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We're happy to have you as part of the family.
Thank you. And that's our list.
That's it. Now, it's picture time, right? Okay.
See, up, down, up, down, it's great.
Just a tad more, you guys. You're, you're good. Actually, you two, oh, off just a little. There you go. All right. And, three, two, one. Look at the beautiful pictures. Happy to be here. Three, two. There we go.
All right, Laura. All right. And what we've all been waiting for is now the county, no, I'm sorry, is the purchasing division report by Mr. Terry Peterson. I know you're back there. I saw you. So, there you are, over there. We did, oh, did I miss the county manager's report? Detail? Okay. You've been talking, you know, minor things. Sorry, sorry, Leo. Okay.
It's going to be the first time you skipped over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to take this opportunity to honor another employee and somebody who I've had the privilege to work closely with and observe, you know, her dedication, competence to this county, and, and great positive impact. And I believe that, there we go. Thank you, Natasha. Dr. Spears did not necessarily want me to do this, but of course didn't want me to do it and only recognize her as an individual. Because as we all know, it's, it's the team that it takes, and it's the team that's behind us. And matter of fact, some of her teammates that helped nominate her for this. So she has been recognized by the State Arizona Public Health Association as the winner of the 2022 Sully Cohen Nursing Excellence Award. And since that's real small, I'd like to just read a little bit about it so that you understand what the award's for and, and why she received it. So the Sully, Sully Cohen Award was established for the purpose of recognizing the contributions of Cecilia Cohen to public health nursing and the Arizona Public Health Association's nursing section. The Sully Cohen Nursing Award recognizes a public health or community health nurse who has made an outstanding contribution to public health in Arizona. All Arizona licensed registered nurses are eligible for this award. Dr. Tasha Spears, RN, PhD, is a servant leader. Emulating the hard work and dedication of Nurse Cohen, Tasha is the first to raise her hand and jump in. While serving as director of Pinal County Public Health, she does not hesitate to test someone for COVID at a moment's notice, or serve ten-plus hours at a COVID immunization pod. And I think some of us have probably personally experienced some of that. Or complete a medical forensic exam in the middle of the night on a weekend. And I had looked over Tasha's time sheets over the years, and I could attest, there's been many of those. As a true compassionate leader, Tasha is always willing to listen to an employee if they're having a hard time. And with patience, she is always willing to teach and guide employees to help them become better and reach their full potential. She leads and serves with a smile on her face and with a joyful heart. Tasha serves with passion and purpose to anyone in need at sometimes their darkest hour or most fearful time. Her dedication to the community as both a nurse and a public health official knows no bounds, as she is always striving to improve service delivery to the public and encouraging quality over quantity from all of her public health staff. So thank you, Tasha, and thank you to the public health team.
Do, is this a picture thing, too?
Uh, we didn't set it up. It's, it's a report. I don't know if that includes a picture.
She doesn't, she doesn't want to do it. And I see her back there shaking her head, going, nope, nope, nope.
They're gonna, they're gonna honor her at a dinner, and I'm sure they'll take a lot of the...
Oh, well, then they'll, they'll embarrass her there. That's fine. We won't do that. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Spears. Okay, now, now we're to the purchasing division report. Good morning, Ms. Peterson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman and members of the board. I am Terry Peterson, Purchasing Manager for Pinal County, and this is your purchasing report for September twenty-eighth, 2022. First, the board is requested to approve the following contract awards. RFP 230428 for state lobbyist services. We recommend Arizona Capital Connections be awarded a contract beginning September twenty-eighth, 2022. This contract will be used by the county manager. IFB 231023, rebid for Pinal Air Park airfield improvements phase one. We recommend Granite Construction Company be awarded a contract in the bid amount of eight million, nine hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and twenty-three cents, with a contingency amount of nine hundred and six thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. This contract will be used by the Public Works Department. IFB 231423 for the Arizona City Public Library Expansion Project. We recommend Danson Construction LLC be awarded a contract in the bid amount of three million and eighty-nine thousand dollars. This contract will be used by facilities. Next, the board is requested to approve the following contract amendments. RFP 200125 for legal case management software. We recommend approval of amendment number one to exercise the optional extension period from September twenty-ninth, 2022 through September twenty-eighth, 2023 with Carpel Solutions. This contract is used by the county attorney's office. RFP 222426 for trauma counseling. We recommend approval of amendment number one to exercise the optional extension period beginning November eighteenth, 2022 with E-Therapy LLC, and this contract is used by the Public Health Services District. Finally, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases. PO 248173 with Motorola Solutions in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents for mobile radios with the IT department. And PO number 248248 with device, excuse me, diversified roofing in the amount of one hundred, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents for roof repairs with the facilities department. And that concludes your purchasing division report for September twenty-eighth, 2022.
Thank you. And does the board have any questions? Seeing none. May I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchasing division report dated September twenty-eighth, 2022, as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Number nine, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Anyone from the board care to pull an item? Hearing, seeing none. County manager? No. Public? No one cares to pull an item? All right. In that case, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda A through AZ.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Two seconds. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. We will now recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting to convene into the flood, or to flood control district meeting. And moving along to that, these are consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Is there anyone from the board that wishes to pull an item? County manager? Public? Seeing none, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A and B on the consent items.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. We will now adjourn the flood control district board of directors meeting and convene, like that, and we'll convene the Public Health Services District Board of Directors meeting, just like that. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the item is called. Is there anyone from the board that wishes to pull an item? County manager? Public? Seeing none, may I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items A and B as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. We'll adjourn the Public Health District, or Public Health Services District Board of Directors meeting and reconvene the board of director, the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. We're now at item twelve. This is a hearing review and action on appeal of hearing officer's decision on ZO 22-0048. And I have, Mr. Keller, you are going to tell me something.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. This is where I turn over my seat to...
This is where I turn over my seat to outside counsel, who is your advisor for these next two items, Joestis.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Estes. Okay, let's see. So here we have, just as a note, items 12 and 13, we are acting as a quasi judicial capacity here, in our judicial capacity. Mr. Cameron, I believe you are standing right there in front of me. How nice.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county manager, I'm Craig Cameron with Pinal County Attorney's Office. This is an appeal from the hearing office. I believe it's completely laid out to you and the pleadings that have been provided. However, I did want to reinforce part of our rules that we do have. Under hearing office rule and as it applies specifically to appeal, to appeals, our Rule 27.4 states that the hearing officer's decision shall be, or the Board of Supervisors' review of the hearing officer's decision shall be limited to the record and proceedings before the hearing officer, and no new evidence may be introduced. That is reinforced again in Rule 27.6, which states the memorandum shall not raise new facts or issues that were not brought before the hearing officer. In that vein, Your Honor, I think I have to file an objection to the memorandum filed by Mr. Colbietta. All but two paragraphs introduce new information that was not presented at the hearing office and new arguments. Nonetheless, what we have here is a family that wants to build their own house, and that is something they certainly can do. However, they've been building this house for four years, and while they've been building this house, they've been living in an RV. The initial presence of the RV and their living in the RV was completely satisfactory for the first six months under the initial building permit. And that, and that building permit still exists today. However, after those six months, they needed to get a temporary use permit. After the second temporary use permit expired, they essentially told building services, no, we're not going to get another service, temporary use permit. If you want to take us to court, fine. That's why we're here. There's no dispute that they are living in an RV on their property while their house is incomplete. There is no horizon of when that house will be complete, unfortunately, and that's part of the problem. I would think if this family had hired a contractor to build their house, they probably would have fired that contractor by now for lack of going forward. Therefore, the question before you today is, can you find any abuse of discretion by the hearing office? And the record is, I think, complete and very clear, there has been none. Request that you reinforce and affirm the hearing office decision and the fines that were set at that time. Thank you.
I have the appellant representative, Richard or Joanna Colbetta? I have no one. All right. Does the board have any questions? You have a question? Okay, go ahead. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
The code does not permit living in an RV beyond the six months. Six months is allowed while you're building a, building a building.
It is allowed once a building permit has been issued to use that as an office and living space while the construction takes place. And a good solid six months is a significant amount. Paula, Paula can add.
And there we go.
Looked weird from here.
Paula Mullenex, Code Compliance Manager. In this particular, the only way that that six months is allowed is under CR3 zoning. And in CR3 zoning, it's actually built in the zoning, that they can get three months and then if it looks like they're, they can petition the county again and they can get another three months. At the end of that time, if they still want to reside in the RV, then they have to apply for a TUP.
And how is the county harmed by someone living in an RV? Why is that rule established?
Well, it's, it's not up for me to determine that. That's what is in the ordinance by the board. But I think what happens is, this originally came in as a complaint. So people that buy in in a certain zoning, what I have been told by them, look, I bought in saying this was a single-family density residential area. It did not say people could be residing in travel trailers. So, you know, we go off of what's written in the code. If the board chooses to change that, I'll enforce that. But right now, that's what I have in front of me.
The harm is to the community.
The neighbors.
Neighbors, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And for, and for quite a few years, apparently. So, any other questions from the supervisor, Miller?
Yeah, real quick. Paula, did you indicate that the travel trailer can only be an option in a CR3? Is that what you said?
No, built into the zoning, CR3 zoning. Any zone, you can apply for a TUP.
Any zone.
Any zone you can, but.
You can apply for a TUP.
Correct. But this CR3 zoning, if you pull it up and look at it in the zoning ordinance, it actually gives the option of residing in a travel trailer while you're building.
Okay.
Not unlimited, though.
No, just six months.
And, and this is CR3 property? And this is CR3 property, so.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I guess I ask for motion here.
We're on number 12, right?
We're on number 12, correct.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve or affirm the current ruling that's presented.
Affirm.
Affirm.
Affirm. Confirm? Affirm?
Affirm. Afirm.
A. Thank you.
Okay, I think that was the motion. Did that work, Mr. Estes?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
4-1, motion passes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. But don't go anywhere because item number 13 is hearing review and action on appeal of hearing officer's decision on ZO 22-0055. Ms. Cameron.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, county manager. This is a hearing office appeal on the finding of violations at a, what was once formerly a, a plant nursery. 15 acres that had an active nursery on it with a number of structures, a number of nursery areas, buildings, et cetera. About five years ago, that operation stopped. And as a result, the property has gone feral. There is a retention pond. There are some portable buildings. There are hoop structures, shade structures for, for plants. There's an irrigation system that has not been used. That has caused the violation to accrue. At the hearing office level, there was no dispute about what was happening, that it hadn't been used, that it was rundown. The owner at one time said, yeah, we know that's a problem. Part of their appeal in this case is, well, we're selling it. I don't think at the hearing office level, I know at the hearing law office level, there was no document submitted to support that it has been sold. It is still in the same owner's name. There hasn't been a transfer deed. The violation is there, and it doesn't appear that it's going to change anytime soon. Once there is a new owner, then we can discuss it, but there is no owner. We still have the same owners from five years ago, and the property has become a magnet for feral animals. It's, it's reverting into a, a set of ruins. I have personally been out to the property, and there's some very nice homes budding this property. Of course, they don't want to see that there forever. We need to do something, at least the start is to affirm the hearing office decision and allow us to go forward to convince these people to get something done. Request that the hearing office decision be affirmed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Glenn McMinn, and I live at 464 South Mule Shoe Road in Apache Junction for the last 26 years. With respect to the, with respect to the reason for this appeal is during, during my hearing, I did submit a document that I have entered into an installment agreement to sell this property to one of my former customers. And they're about two-thirds of the way through the installment. So I, I did that. Back in 2017, I, I don't know if you guys have my memorandum, my letter to you guys, but I put this property up for sale on the MLS as a, as a commercial opportunity, as a nursery. And the, the structures there, I mean, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to build this place out. And there are some things that are overgrown, and we'll remedy those. But with respect to the, the things that are associated with a nursery, this customer specifically wanted these things. The, the holding ponds, to put in a holding, we have two holding ponds. It had cost in excess of, I know somebody who just put one in out there, it's over $30,000. He's trying to get a grant for it. But my customer intends to raise plants there and have animals there. And in the purchase contract, which I, I attached as Exhibit A, you know, it lists these items that he specifically wants that are associated with a nursery, the hoop houses, the mulch, the nursery containers. This is all valuable stuff to somebody who wants to have a nursery. So with respect to the count one, with the potting containers, mulch and things, I mean, this is, he, he wants this stuff. And it'd be interference with contract just to take this down. Also, also with respect, and count two, they went on about recreational vehicles. And in account, it says, beginning on December 28th, 2020, and continuing to the present, owner has maintained numerous travel trailers as living quarters. And there is no truth to that whatsoever. I had allowed approximately 10 to 12, 15 years ago, I had a friend named Jeff Wright in a bad way. He lost his storage situation. Okay, Jeff, you can, you can put your trailer out back. Since then, he's been in assisted living, the last I heard. And in order to make people happy, we're, we're willing to take the trailers out, even though, even though we're allowed to have trailers there, they can't be as living quarters, and they haven't been used as living quarters. But they're, they're older vintage trailers. And so, you know, we're willing to get those out, but I completely disagree with that, with that supposed violation. With respect to the nursery containers and the hoop houses, they say it's all dilapidated. A hoop house is basically PVC houses, and then in the winter, we put plastic over the top of them, and they, they work great to keep your plants from freezing. Other, the nursery structures out there, you know, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements there, and I, I just don't see that we should have to take those down. And also with respect to Mr. Cameron's memorandum of, on appeal, you know, he described it as a dystopian scene. I admit that it's overgrown, but dystopian, this is not, you know, it's not Mad Max, it's not Charlie Manson's Ranch. You know, it's a nursery, and, and it's overgrown, and it needs work, and we will, we will remedy that. And, but, but dystopian is wrong. He's, in page two, he says, since then, additional travel trailers have been added. There's no truth to that whatsoever. The trailers that I allowed to get parked out there, you know, it's been probably in excess of at least eight to 10 years. A former employee, Jesus Garcia, he asked me if he could store a little canned ham trailer out back. Yeah, Jesus, you can store it. I haven't been in, in contact with Jesus for six or seven years, so I'm of the opinion he's not going to come and get it. I'll make it go away, even though we have a right to a, to store a trailer. I have one of my former customers, Ace Riffing Jeff Kohler, I was able to get, get ahold of him, and he hauled a trailer out of there this, this summer. So I was, or actually, last summer, he got it out of there. But, so I'm happy with that. Also, I object to Mr. Cameron's, he said that the property owner presented no evidence to convert the findings to the hearing office. And that's not true. I, I gave Ms. Mullenex a copy of my purchase contract that, that clearly showed that it was the intent of my, of the buyer to purchase, you know, the property as a nursery. And also, you know, I testified as to the, you know, that these trailers are not being used for purposes of living quarters. And so, you know, I objected their finding. I thank you. I appreciate your consideration.
Can you stay up?
Thank you, Mr. McMinn. Yes. Are there any questions from the board?
So, yes. So, so we're expected to do some kind of action on this today?
Yes.
Are there any counter actions that you would like? Would you like to ask for more time? I mean, it's just now starting to cool down. If we would grant you several more months, could you make it look way better than it does now? And then by then, maybe the, the buyer would, would then come through with some more concrete plans to buy?
The, the final payment, right now, I'm the, I am the owner of record. Well, actually, me and my mom and my dad and my friends and my wife.
But you said there's a potential buyer.
Well, no, no, he's already, of, of the contract, he has, he's paid two-thirds of it, and the last third of it is not scheduled to be paid for a year.
So what I'm asking, if it's been like this for five years, would, would several more months help?
We can definitely clean up a lot in three months. I mean, it is a 15-acre parcel. He's not interested in the trailers, so I'm, I'm looking to get all of them out of there just, just because. And then there's, there's some dead trees. And yeah, we can, we can get the dead trees out of there. I mean, he wanted to mulch it all up and put it in his mulch pile. And I can force some action. We can make it look better. And, and I'm hoping, I'm optimistic that you're right, that it is going to cool down.
Okay. All right.
Yes, we can do better.
Thank you.
Are there other questions from the board? Supervisor Goodman.
How, how long has this been, have we been working with Mr. McMinn with his property?
They've, they've given me notices of violation, and due to my economic circumstances and, and things at that time, I wasn't, there's a lot of work to do. And I have, I've been negligent. I mean, the county, they have given me notice of violation, and I had just. I mean, the county, they have given me notice of violation, and I had just not been in a position at that time to do very much out there.
Okay. If I could ask Ms. Mullinex.
Ms. Mullinex.
Again, Paula Mullinex, Co-Compliance Manager, Pinell County. We originally started this case in August 21, 2017, and we had the case open for approximately a year, and at that time, we did know they still had ag status with the assessor, which doesn't necessarily mean they're zoning exempt, but usually, we do hands-off on certain cases. So we closed it out at that time, and then the neighbors complained and complained again. So in August 6, 2020, we started another case, and then I worked with the assessor's office, and they said, since it had been abandoned for so long, they were going to remove the ag status as of January 1, 2022. So we staffed the case with the county attorney's office, and they said, wait to move forward to the hearing office until after the ag status has been removed. But we've been sending letters that have not been returned, tried to do numerous correspondence since 2017, and we've never gotten any response at all. And in the hearing, they even responded and said, yeah, we know you've been trying to contact us. So it's been since August of 2017.
So, real quick, does it still have ag status?
No, it was removed as of January 1.
So you're going to have, they're going to have to get that back reinstated if they want to put a nursery back on there.
Yes, if the owner wants to put the nursery back in, they'll either have to do that, or if they can't get that at this time, then they'll just have to be subject to zoning processes to be able to have the nursery.
Is that difficult to do? Is that a lengthy process?
I'm not the person to ask. I wish I was. I mean, it's allowed in that zone, it's GR, so what they would just have to do, I believe it's just site plan review, would be the only thing they'd have to do.
Okay.
So.
I see Brent back there, and I guess what I'm getting at is that you can see there's still a lot of processes, because, for lack of a better word, you even said it yourself, was you neglected doing some things and making sure things were taken care of, and part of it was in the process, which ultimately has brought us here to this point right now. But nonetheless, you know, I think one of the things that I think this board has always been really good at is trying to, like Supervisor Miller has always said, all we're trying to do is get into compliance. And if we're not happy with the way that compliance is, there's a process to change things, and this board has the flexibility of being able to do that through zoning requirements and so on and so forth. But as we're looking at this particular case and under the circumstances of what's taking place, I do see, you know, and it's interesting, it started in August, we always pick the hottest time of the year for people to comply, get in compliance, I don't understand that either, but it's not by choice, but anyway, I empathize with you with what you're trying to do, and anyway, I just wanted to get more, kind of the late the time on this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you. This, I'm going to go a little broad here, this is a bit of a philosophical decision that maybe the board has to come to grips with, and it's something I bring up often, and that's, do we clean it and lean it? Do we go in there and do the work, and then file a lien on the property, and then when it does change hands, we get paid? I mean, at some point, I mean, that has to be, that has to be a place in this whole process, that finally, nothing's happened, so we've got to move forward and fix it. And it's somewhat of a, somewhat of a, maybe a radical idea, but again, if we're not, if we're not even progressing a little bit, at some point, we have to come to grips with that. So that's why I really think, in the future, we budget money for that type of stuff. But anyway, that's a whole nother discussion. So, I don't know, I don't know how many times we keep giving opportunity to move forward. It does bother me that our attorney says, you did not produce this sales contract, and you say you did produce the sales contract at the hearing officer. Who's right there? I mean, we either had it, or you either had it there at the hearing, or you did not have it at the hearing. And you have one now, but was it available at the hearing?
I recall giving the relevant page that talked about the fixtures and personal properties of the contract. I did, I did have a copy of that, and I believe in the voluminous record, they acknowledged getting a page of it. There's, it's a substantial transcription, and I believe it's, they acknowledged in the transcript that I did give them.
Okay.
A document.
That you gave a document, okay.
Did I drop?
Could you please identify the page and line number in the transcript for the board that you referenced to the contract?
Not without going and grabbing it and thumbing through it, I didn't, I didn't take that careful of the notation of it.
Well, and I have, well, I do have another question for you.
Yes, sir.
You have a contract, you, have you identified a total purchase/sell, and have you, can you prove that this gentleman that you're negotiated with of sale has transferred money to you in some way, shape, or form? Is there any way to prove a transaction?
They've paid us $400,000. Yeah, I could do that, but I'm not allowed to introduce new documents at this, but...
I understand.
And we're not deeding the property over to them until they give us the final installment.
And I totally understand that. I don't have, if they gave you $400,000, I think we'd have a little cash to do some of this cleanup.
Well, it's...
I, okay, I mean, I'm just trying to get...
Well, I mean, one sixth of that belonged to me.
Okay.
And it went to paying off nursery debt, you know, it went to paying off debt. But, but yeah, I can get some sweat equity into the situation and haul some things away. Even though the travel trailers are allowed to be stored there, I think the place would look better without them, and if it makes people happy, they're, I'll get those out of there. But, but yeah, of that, you know, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
I do, I, you're...
I would like you to identify the page and the line in which the document was presented to the hearing officer, and yeah, you'll have to go get it, I guess, if you can reference it. That would be good.
We can't bring new evidence in here, though. Well, this is just corroborating evidence, okay.
It's in the transcript, is it not?
In the interest of speed, Mr. May?
It's in the transcript, you can reference it.
Yeah.
Okay.
You, each member of the board has a complete record of what was introduced and the transcript of the proceedings at the hearing office. If you do not have as an exhibit attached to the record on appeal, it was not introduced.
I'm zipping through the transcript, and I don't...
Page 12, line 18.
12, 18.
Is where the discussion starts.
Page 12, okay.
If I may, I have spoken to Ms. Mullinex, who he refers to handing a copy of the contract. She does not recall ever receiving one from him on the date of the hearing. Nonetheless, having it, providing it to her, and not introducing it to the hearing office does not help at all.
You said page 12, Supervisor.
Line 18, page 12, line 18 is where the discussion starts. Mr. Chairman, line 13, or excuse me, page 13, line 3, 4, and 5 references the contract, but not, it doesn't say it's presented.
Yeah, I see no reference.
Sounds like the intention may have been there, and a lot of times civilians don't know. We're all civilians, but aren't used to dealing with... Down a little bit more.
Mr. McGinn, how you doing?
I found one reference that was made on page...
I tell you what, while you're looking for that for a minute, we're going to call a five-minute recess, but keep looking, we'll be right back. All right, we are back in session, and continue, sir.
To your question, I've reviewed the transcript in pages nine, 10, and 11, there was discussions about a purchase contract, but I don't see a specific reference from Ms. Mullinex, you know, acknowledging the page that I gave her, and there's a discussion, maybe I could get you, you know, copies of the original contract, but no, she didn't have a signed original contract, and I do recall giving her the one page just regarding the pictures of personal property, but I don't find a reference here in the transcript other than a lot of the purchase contract and people and things like that.
Okay, can we turn the microphone on? I think it's off.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's the green button on the very front of the microphone.
Okay.
Oh, there we go, thank you.
I could have broke that any number of ways. So with respect to Mr. Cameron's question, and the, having an acknowledgement in the transcript that I gave them a page, I don't see that acknowledgement here in the transcript other than talk of what it was.
Okay.
So...
All right, thank you. Does the board have any other questions for Mr. McGinn? Any comments, suggestions? I'm going to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we continue this for a date specific, which would be the first meeting in January, either the 4th or the 11th, I don't know what the meeting date is.
So that's how many days are we talking about here?
It's just over 120, it's 120 plus a couple...
120 days after five years? Okay.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second. In favor?
All in favor, say aye. Is that what you asked?
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sir, you've got that long.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay. And now, let's see, Mr. Estes is probably, just a guess, you're going to be leaving, and Mr. Keller is coming back.
I will step down and give it back to Mr. Keller.
Item 14 is a public hearing and discussion, approval, disapproval of case CSR-005-22, and Mr. Roberts, you're up.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. This morning, we are covering case CSR-005-22, that is a comprehensive sign review amendment to permit a electronic message board sign in place of a tenant cabinet. If I could get the next slide, please. There we go. The landowner is Michael and Alice Pelts, and the representative is Michael Donata from Signs Plus, and they're requesting the approval of a comprehensive sign package to CSR-00121 to replace one monument sign tenant cabinet with an electronic message board sign with a sign area of 35.45 square feet per side. The parcel number is 104530500, and the property is located about 300 feet southwest of the intersection of Pecan Creek Road and Gansel Road. This is a county map showing the approximate location of the property, on the north side of Santan Valley and near the Queen Creek annexation. This is a vicinity map showing nearby zoning for similar properties. It's in a commercial area that is proximal to some CR3 residential across the street. And this is an aerial image showing the site. This is a notice area of the property owners who were mailed information about this case. And this is a site plan showing the current location of the existing sign, and also the proposed sign change to include the electronic message board. You can see it there in red in the top right corner of this image, that would be on the northeast side of the property, off of Gansel Road. This is an image of the sign looking towards the southwest, and this is an image to the north showing our notices and the sign along Gansel Road. This is a graphic the applicant has given us showing the proposed changes in a drawing format. The total area of the signage change would be 70.9 square feet, accommodating for the electronic message board sign on both sides. Some items for board consideration, the existing sign area was previously approved under CSR-00121. Electronic message board signs are not currently permitted under the Pinell County Sign Code. The sign review committee met regarding this case, and they failed to recommend approval based on a tie vote of 2 to 2 on an approval motion. Since then, we had a meeting with the community development director, who recommended approval with the inclusion of four additional stipulations, and the county has received no public comments on the proposed signage. Staff recommends the board supervisors approve this case with following stipulations, and those are, one, the sign's minimum display time shall not change more than once every eight seconds; two, the illumination levels, electronic message displays shall incorporate photocells/light sensors with non-mag dimming technology to adjust display brightness in accordance with ambient light conditions; displays shall have a brightness level of no greater than .3-foot candles above ambient light conditions at the property line, at any property line, excuse me; maintenance, any allowed electronic message display that malfunctions or is damaged shall be repaired or disconnected within 24 hours by the owner or operator of the sign, and the sign shall be deactivated between the hours of 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM Mountain Standard Time. At this time, does the board have any questions?
Any questions from the board? I'm good, you have one?
No, I, I'm good.
Oh, you're good, okay, I thought you'd be... So, okay, very well, then we have, the applicant is on telephonically, if you have any questions, Mr. Pelts? But we don't, I don't think we have any questions, okay. So this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? I see mostly county staff, so I'm guessing no. So, okay, in this case, I will close the public hearing and ask the board if you've got any questions. Seeing none, hearing none, I'd ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 14 with four stipulations recommended by the directors read into the record by our county staff.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, thank you, Mr. Roberts, appreciated.
Thank you, Supervisor.
All right, item... All right, item fifteen, public hearing and discussion, approval, disapproval of resolution number 092822-RD22-026. And Ms. Garza, you are up.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I'm here for item fifteen, an abandonment of a portion of Heritage Road. Heritage Road is located in District Four now, along Hunt Highway. This portion of, of declaration of road was one of, one of the items from our 1922 Declaration of Land. The property owner, Lucky Hunt, which is the Lookout Mountain subdivision, PAD, which is located on this map, is realigning the Heritage Road intersection to Hunt Highway. The county also has a project that will go east of Hunt Highway to the Felix Road alignment that will also realign this intersection to more at a 90-degree angle. I don't, you know, from engineering design standards, if you're not coming into that angle when you're at a stop location, it's very hard to see from east to west to make the turning movements. So this is the location that was identified that served both, you know, public safety and the best interest in the property owner. So this is, like I said, is consideration for the development, Lookout Mountain. The final plot should be before the board in this winter. The board did initiate this abandonment at the September 7th meeting. The property owner was not able to obtain signatures from the adjacent property owners, which was State Land to the north and the Gila River Indian Community to the west. There's been some discussion with State Land within the recent couple of days discussing access along Hunt Highway, which was one of their concerns. So our county engineer has drafted a response back to them that that shouldn't be a concern of theirs moving forward, being that there is two opportunities for full access movements along Hunt in this location. Legal or physical access would not be an issue, as both the Indian Community and State Land both have that frontage along Hunt. And we don't have any plans to further the heritage corridor alignment further west, being that the terrain, topography, as well as, we don't know what the future holds for, for that western area. Utilities were notified, there isn't anything within the easement today. So here are some photos of native vegetation. This is looking west. This is actually looking east down the existing alignment today, which in the future will be paved with either the development process or a capital project. This is looking north, northbound on Hunt Highway. And I can answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Seeing, hearing none, I would now open the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing and hearing none, public hearing is closed. I would ask the board again if you have any questions. No, in that case, ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number fifteen as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in two seconds. Tick tock, I'm sorry. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you very much. Item sixteen, public hearing and discussion, approval, disapproval of the program year 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER. And Ms. Patel, you are up.
Good morning, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, Heather Patel with the Office of Budget and Finance. Today, we're talking about the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, affectionately known as CAPER. We are required to do this every year to talk about the projects that were completed and the funds that were expended in the previous year, which would be July 1 of '21 to June 30 of '22. Because we are a newer recipient of the HUD funds, we actually are being able to report on multiple funding years, which would be the '19, '20, and '21 funding years. We did spend over $3.5 million on various projects. I want to go through each of the funding years really quick, just to point out some, some things regarding our projects. In our '19 CDBG, our Community Development Block Grant Program, we had finished the Florence Waterline Project in our previous CAPER. So this one was really just focusing on the two existing projects, which is our owner-occupied housing rehab program and the design and engineering of sewer system in Colonial Del Sol. So both of those are, well, the Colonial Del Sol is nearing completion, and the housing rehab has been pretty successful with 13 projects. We also received some CDBG coronavirus funding, and with that, we had two rounds. The first round, we funded a lot of nonprofits. The majority of their work was completed in the previous CAPER. It was just July, August, and September of '21 that ended out their contracts. So essentially, we had to report their impact on this current CAPER. We also funded some projects with two of our local governments, and that was in our second round of the coronavirus funding. Right now, we do still have a few projects in the works. We have the Mortgage and Rental Assistance Program with our Housing Authority. And we also have two nonprofits that are finishing up their work, which will end at the end of this year. The Arizona City Library Project, we did fund with this, and earlier today, you approved the contract for that in the purchasing report. So we hope that gets constructed and completed by the end of this next year. Our 2020 CDBG funds, we completed several projects, including two park projects. And then, as a reminder, under our HUD programs, we have four participating communities. That would be Eloy, Florence, Mammoth, and Maricopa. So we were successful in completing the Eloy and Maricopa projects. The Mammoth project is actually going to be completed by the end of this year, and as well as the Florence projects, so they will be reported on next year's CAPER. And then we have a large project, which was in Hopi Hills to do waterline and fire hydrants that spanned over two of the fiscal years, and that project is going to be done here within a matter of months. Our 21 CDBG funds, again, we've did our community projects, Eloy, Maricopa, and Mammoth. The Florence will be done here soon, as well as the Hopi Hills. Our home funds, which is specific to housing projects, related projects, we have another portion of our owner-occupied housing rehab program with that, and we did complete one home. We also had put out an RFP for new housing development, and we did select Chicanos Por La Causa, and they will be starting the construction of their project of 176 rental units in January. Our 2021 home funds, we selected two projects through that RFP process. The Chicanos Por La Causa is a continuation of the 20 project. And then we also did two single-family housing developments with Habitat for Humanity. And back on September 7th, the board executed the development agreement with them for those two homes to be sold to low-income households. We also were recipients of extra Home American Rescue Plan Act funding. None of those projects have started, so they were not included in this CAPER, but just as an update, we are funding several nonprofits to do various projects. All must benefit a qualifying population, according to HUD, which generally speaking is persons who are experiencing homelessness, or those who are fleeing domestic violence and other various forms of domestic violence. We also have our third program, which is the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. This one is specific to benefit persons who are experiencing homelessness. We do have a rapid rehousing program in our Housing Authority, and they have successfully housed one person during the last CAPER, or during the last year of July 1 to June 30. That is a quick summary of our program and the projects that we've completed. The entire CAPER was placed on our website for public view, and it is due to HUD by the end of this month. Any questions?
All right, any questions from the board? Supervisor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In all this, did Rita Wooton ever get her house rebuilt?
That poor woman, I feel so bad for her. We've hit quite a few stumbling blocks, but we are seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, and it would be my expectation that we would finish it by the end of June 30 next year.
Okay, thank you.
And I can certainly share more with you in detail afterwards, but yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, this has a, a public hearing aspect to it. I will open the public hearing. Anyone from the public care to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and if there are no questions from the board, I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item 16 as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Patel.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Item 17, public hearing required by ARS Section 11-391 on a proposal to incur long-term financing obligation to fund all or a portion of the county's unfunded liabilities with respect to the Arizona State Retirement System. Mr. Liu, would you please introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, a couple of years back, we financed our unfunded liability for the PSPRS system and, and are doing well with that. Since then, the ASRS has worked with partners to develop and get some statute changes to be able to participate in doing a similar thing. Of course, the ASRS is a pooled retirement system as opposed to individual entities, so there are, there are some nuances and differences. And, and quite frankly, there's some flexible tools that actually help, help the county manage finances and cash flow with a little more flexibility than the previous one. So we do have Stiefel here who can go over that, and if there's any other questions, Mark or I can, can follow up and answer, as well as Claude, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Reader. You can hand them to Natasha. Like I said earlier, she's in charge, you don't do that, boy, you break the rules, you get your hands slapped.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning, good afternoon. I've also brought my bodyguard with me, Claude Lockhart.
Excellent. He can protect you from Natasha, okay, just saying.
I'd like to add a little bit of a sense of humor into some of our technical presentations, so we appreciate that. Okay, well, it's nice to, hello again, and this is obviously a public hearing, and we're going to introduce this concept of the Arizona State Retirement System Contribution Pre-Funding Program with the board. We'll go through this very briefly. I'm going to go over the program generally, and then I'm going to have Claude walk you through some estimated numbers that we're, we're going to share with the board. As Mr. Liu mentioned, in October of 2020, we did complete a refinancing for Pinal County relative to the sheriff unfunded liability and the corp unfunded liability, if you remember. If memory serves me correctly, I think that was about $87 million of a unfunded liability that we addressed through the issuance of those, of some bonds to help address the unfunded liability that the county had to the tune of about $87 million. Then the nice thing, just as a reminder, the expected savings of that transaction was roughly about $49 million, and just wanted to kind of give the board kind of a quick overview on that front. As Mr. Liu said, ASRS had seen the success of the PSPRS and has now developed its own program with some, with some nuances we're going to walk you through. So I'll take you really to page one, and I've been in front of the board, I think, for at least three public hearings, which, as you know, is required any time a county is considering the issuance of some form of a debt obligation, whether it be public infrastructure improvements or refinancing pension obligations, we are required under statute to have the public hearing. So that's really what page one is about. Page two, Natasha, thank you, are you gonna? Oh, I'm turning that, my bad. I got ahead of myself, okay. On page two, this is your balance sheet from your most recent audit that the county completed, and on the Arizona State Retirement Unfunded Pension Liability of the county as of June 30, 2021, you can see, we circled it and read for you to make it easy, was the net liability of about $117.4 million unfunded. As Mr. Liu said, that is your sliver of a larger unfunded liability I'll share with you here in a moment, okay? So again, if, if the board decides to move forward with the financing, essentially what we're doing is swapping out liabilities, and we're only going to do it if there's a significant expected savings for Pinal County. So as you know, as far as our public policy objectives, working closely with the county, we're always looking at, at opportunities to save the county money, we know the board is, you've done a very good job on that, we compliment the board for that. Essentially, the board, the county's paying about 7% on your unfunded liability, which now is about $117 million, I'm going to walk you through that in a moment. So the unfunded portion accrues to ASRS at a rate of about 7%. So the goal here, similar to the sheriff pension that we did back in October of '20, is can we sell bonds for the county? Obviously, interest rates have risen since we did the October 2020 pension deal. That was a 260 money, if you remember that, okay? So as you know, rates are edging up on us. They have come back a little bit today, but we're going to have to watch the market, but if we can get the county somewhere in the 5% range in this market, 5.5% range, if you will, this is, this says 580, and we're obviously hoping to get as low of an interest rate as we can should we proceed, then we've estimated some, estimated budget savings of about $42.4 million, and present value savings to the county is somewhere around $13.1 million. So as you know, as opportunities present themselves, we, we've met with staff and meet with the board to see if this is something of interest to the county. So just wanted to share with you kind of our, our policy objectives. When our Arizona counties decide to issue some form of a debt obligation, under Arizona law, we really have four options. As you recall, we just went through this together on the, on the recent economic development transaction. The county could issue property tax bonds, which we know is not of interest. We can do the obligations, which are subject annual appropriation, more expensive, and we can do cash, and this is a program for employers around the state, that if an employer has cash, available cash, they can also advance the cash to address the unfunded liability. So it can be done either in the form of cash, or it can be done in the form of, of a borrowing or a combination thereof. So at the moment, what we're recommending to the county is if we do move forward, we'll go ahead and use the similar revenue bonds that we've done with you before, in which we pledge our excise tax revenue bonds, and that's generally speaking how most of our 15 counties do their financings. Before I turn it over to Claude, just wanted to share this with you, the, here where my cursor is, the statewide unfunded liability in the pool of assets, the unfunded liability is $13.1 billion, with a B, and the county's estimate, what we're estimating now as of June 30, '22, roughly is about $108 million. That number bounces around, as you know, each year based on fund performance and based on actuarial longevity calculation, so we get these numbers from ASRS to help estimate what the county's liability is. So just more out of curiosity, just to share with the board, in case it's helpful, we want to share with you all the different jurisdictions around the state, and of course, K-12 public schools are big employers, and so you can see they have about $6 billion of the $13 billion, and then you can see down here with our counties, statewide, we're about, if you don't mind, all around about $1.4 billion. So an unfunded pension liability, we're keeping our eye on, and is this new program that ASRS introduced, is this beneficial for the county to potentially participate in? So with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to give you a brief overview, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Claude to come up. Claude is my wonderful colleague out of our Chicago office, who's, who's one of our pension experts doing pensions all around the country, so I'm going to turn the rest of the presentation here over to Claude. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reader.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, it is the afternoon. Mr. Chairman, supervisor.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon. It is the afternoon. Mr. Chairman, supervisors, really nice to be back here in front of you. I know we were here a handful of months ago talking about this issue. Wanted to bring you an update here. On page six here, we want to talk a little about ASRS returns. Mr. Liu had mentioned there are a few differences between what we did with PSPRS and what we're suggesting to do here. One of those differences is the fact that we're going to be taking money from this bond issued, depositing with ASRS in a separate account, if you will. That money is going to be invested alongside the rest of the assets in ASRS. So, essentially, we are taking that money and we're investing with ASRS. For PSPRS, very similar mechanism, but we're investing it through PSPRS. Looking at the historical ASRS returns here that we show on the page, what we're really looking here is at a longer-term investment horizon. The term of the debt, as you'll see in the next couple of slides, is about 20 years. What we've done here is we've looked at a 25-year trailing annualized ASRS return. And really, what we're trying to show here, the dotted line shows the assumed rate of return. The dark green line shows what that annualized long-term rate of return is. And you can see that the ASRS system has consistently been above that dotted line. If you go out to 2022, that number is about 7.25% over the last 25 years. Of course, that includes the dot-com bubble, the Great Recession, the COVID pandemic, the market downturn in the first half of this year, and we're still at a 7.25% over the last 25 years. Turning on to the next slide, I'm going to take your attention to the bottom of this page first. So, like I said, we're talking about making a deposit with ASRS here. They're going to invest that money. And what we're assuming in our analysis is that they're going to achieve their 7% long-term investment return assumption. At the bottom of this page, how are we going to finance that deposit through the issuance of bonds? We show that debt service in dark blue, and the bar's there. The dark green line shows the expected offsets that we'll get from ASRS. And when I say offsets, you're still going to be getting a bill every year from ASRS for a pension contribution, but we're going to be able to use the assets in this sort of separate account, if you will, to offset a portion of that bill. So, if you have a bill for $10 million, you can see here in the second year, in 2024, we assume an offset of about $9 million. The county would still have a million-dollar payment left to ASRS, but $9 million of that payment would go away. It would be taken from the prepayment balance. If you look at the difference between that green line and the blue bars, those shaded green bars, that is the expected savings from doing the transaction. Those amounts total up to about $42.5 million through 2048. And expressed in today's dollars, it's about $13 million. If we go on to the next page, page eight, just showing this in an annual format, Mr. Liu had also mentioned there's a great deal of flexibility with this program. What we're showing here is we're showing an offset that is intended to go through 2048. So, you can see that amount is pretty much level for most of that term. The nice thing that ASRS is offering here is the opportunity for flexibility. So, if you came back a year from now, and let's say that you had another banner year, you had some surpluses, you didn't need to use this much offset, you could come back to ASRS and say, well, we really only need to offset $8 million of our payment. That other $1 million would stay in the fund. It would continue to earn investment earnings, and then you could use that later for additional benefit. The vice versa, if you will, is also true. If you had an unexpected expense and you had to come back and say, well, we need to offset $10 million, there would be the opportunity to do that as well. So, this is really a pro forma schedule based on some objectives that we understand the county is trying to achieve. And you can just sort of see the annual savings there, summing up to that $42.5 million over the course of 25 years. On the next slide, slide nine, just a breakdown of the revenues that are pledged towards repayment of this obligation that investors and rating agencies take a very close look at. You can see exceptional growth in the revenues. You can see from '21 to '22, an improvement of about $18 million. A really significant amount of revenue as the base for the repayment. Lot of numbers, more numbers. Page 10 here, just taking a look at what are our expectations for the projected market rates. How much debt does that add to the debt that you already have outstanding? And what does that mean from a coverage perspective or the amount of revenue that you have divided by the amount of debt service that you have? You can see here, we sort of summed up in column seven here, the total aggregate debt service after the assumed issuance of these obligations. Maximum annual debt service coverage comes pretty quick in fiscal 2026, and you've got over two times coverage there, which is something that seems as a strong indicator of ability to repay by investors and by rating agencies. I'm going to turn it back over to Mark for this last slide to talk a little about schedule. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claude. I want you to stay right here real quick. I'll just go ahead and share with the Board if there's interest in moving forward. Obviously, this is a public hearing and no action. But we're moving, working closely with staff, trying to get a transaction potentially teed up, if you will, and prepare for the sale of bonds before the next Fed meeting, which is in early November. So, we're doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work as we normally do, trying to tee this up or set the transaction up. And again, we're only going to do the transaction if we achieve the desired level of savings for the county. But this calendar shows you down below there is our next meeting, probably with your Board, is October 27. And that's the Board meeting in which you would consider a resolution authorizing the transaction to move forward if the market is still with us. And of course, we would at that time give you a very thorough update. So, that kind of concludes our slides as it relates to the 11-391 public hearing process, an overview of the ASRS pre-funding program, we call it, and how the county might benefit from that program. So, I'm sure there are questions, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and we're here to help address any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the Board? I'm seeing one. Supervisor Goodman?
Yeah. You know, I'm looking at the debt, $13 billion in a retirement program that I just, you know, since I've been in here, it's been trying to wrap my head around these government retirement programs. How in that... I'm sorry, but how in the... I was going to say heaven, but how in the world did we get in this position where it's that much? And especially, most of our... Most of the people don't understand this, you know, with some of our retirement programs, there was a guarantee that was with certain... And so, if the... And these dollars are invested in the market somehow, and the market is volatile, and it falls short. I've got a 401K plan, or we've rolled it over into something else, my wife and I. And I don't get those guarantees. But yet, somehow, in government, and this is where I think the frustration for a lot of people, is that legislators and representatives and state and federal representatives have made law to this, to where this is an obligation and now a debt that we, the taxpayers, and the county has to... that we're responsible for. I don't know about anybody else, but that just fumigates me. It just... I want to... I just want to explode over this. And I cannot... You know, I see, get some of these emails, 13... What the heck is going on down there? And that's the part that's frustrating. And so, and maybe, if I'm far from the mark on this one, correct me. But this is a bottom line, what we're dealing with, what we've been having to deal with for years since, and even years before I even got in here, is truly the incompetency of elected officials and those that have been moving forward, and now we're having to bear the brunt of all that, the taxpayer, us. And that just... I'm livid when I look at this and I look at these numbers. Nonetheless, it's still an obligation that our predecessors before us, from the state level, federal level on, have put us under the responsibility of doing. And I appreciate you guys trying to help us figure out this liability that we've been put under and made it our responsibility, not by choice of ours, but nonetheless, it's ours. I just want to make sure I make that comment, make it very loud and clear, and speaking out on behalf of our citizens and on behalf of Mike Goodman, that this is just... It's crazy madness what's happened to us. But nonetheless, we're in this position, and by law, we've got to move forward. I get that. So, anyway, I'm off my high horse.
Oh, now, okay, now we're good. Okay, so, are there any other...
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Liu.
Did you want me to comment at all on that? Or was that rhetorical, or would you like me to provide?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'll make a judgment call. Just go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. Take... You know, help me out. If I'm wrong, then I'll eat crow.
No, I think you characterize it very well on that soapbox. And I think you're valid and concern from all of us and the public. I did have an opportunity to speak with the executive director of the ASRS for a good 30 minutes to an hour. But he wasn't able to make it at this meeting, unfortunately. We invited him. He already had a pre-engagement. But he has offered to sit down and meet with any one of you or have a phone call to help go through some of that history. To your point, I'll try to characterize what I can and regurgitate a little bit of it. Yes, and as you know, with pension funds at any level, you know, they ebb and flow sometimes. In Social Security, we think we have this huge surplus, and we think we can use it for this and that. And then we realize, what, five, 10 years later, that we're the other way, and we're trying to address that. That's been similar, I think, with pensions, even state and local throughout the nation. So, back, I think, about early 2000s, late 90s, the director was there at that time still, and he said he did identify that the system itself and the laws in place had issues. And although they were showing a surplus, that they were going to be headed in the wrong direction, which they did. So, over a span of probably about four or five years back in the early, mid 2000s, they did work on those. It took many years, because it took a lot of years to get the legislators to understand the different elements that were going to cause problems. Some of them were based on things like requiring the actuarial standards to be a certain type, and a certain type that they thought, you know, really wasn't one that represented well. They got that changed. There were other things that had negative effects on the plan, not too different than something that might have negative effects on our benefits trust plan that we identify and say, this is going to be a problem down the years. It's going to cost us much, and the contributions really aren't going to make up for it. Different content, but similar principles. And so, they addressed those probably, like I said, over four or five years, and there's a whole array of them. And so, they think they got that at that point pretty much structurally balanced to close all of those issues. But those issues and the contribution rates that the actuaries are to fix in the future, they're charging those rates that, you know, are going to fix in the future. But you've still got this past from, you know, decades of certain issues being in the system that have to be made up for. So, those are in current contribution rates. There's a portion of that that's funding the unfunded liability. But to that point, and to the public's concern on some of these comments, is based on them getting the 7% return. So, even though it's a little confusing, it seems backwards, this unfunded liability, we're currently being charged 7% interest, because that's the actuary rate of return on if they had cash in their hands that they're putting to work. So, they're saying, hey, since we don't have this cash, the 7% is what the charge is on that. So, for the public's sake, there's a couple of these comments asking about, you know, what is the interest on this debt, over the life of this debt? And when you see an amortization schedule, you're going to see like, oh, well, gosh, we paid more in interest over 25 years than we even took out in the first place, which, if you looked at the amortization schedule on your house, you'd probably see a very similar thing, you know, when you're looking at 5% on a 30-year mortgage. This is not much different, except that in this case, and I'm saying this, I know you understand this, but I'm saying this for the sake of the public comments we received. If you were to do an amortization schedule on 7%, instead of what we can get in the market at 5.5%, this interest over 25 years would be much higher than even what you would see on ours. And that's the whole essence of what we're trying to do with managing this, is get a 5.5% interest over 25 years instead of a 7% and capture the savings of that 1.5% difference. Over, for $100 million over 25 years is a lot, right? Even 1% of $100 million is a million in a year. So, that's how you end up seeing these numbers. So, I just take the opportunity to validate what you're saying and to say that there were old things that they think they fixed to this point. It's always going to be something else in the future. People are living longer, and that's also thrown off some of the actuarial life expectancy rates. And so, we'll have to continue... They'll have to continue to manage and make adjustments and hopefully do them timely. And hopefully do... Sometimes through the state, it does take a while. It's not a quick fix. And as I said, they knew they couldn't fix it in one year. So... But again, the director can talk more to you, you all as a Board, if you'd like, and hopefully, we could get him here in the future.
Thank you, Liu.
Okay, this has a... Any other questions, by the way, from the Board? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the current market rate is Fed rates, 3 to 3.25, it says here on Google. And Mr. Liu, what would be the rate that Pinal County would then pay? Is that the 3.7%? If I'm reading this right?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, it looks like Stiefel's getting up, but we're estimating probably an all-in interest, probably about 5.5. We'll see what the market can absorb, you're right. The rates are changing fast, the 10-years near 4, if it's not at 4. These maturities are of different terms, so it ends up being an average. But Claude?
No, Mr. Liu answered it very well. It's exactly right. You know, when buyers go out to buy municipal bonds, right, they look at the United States Treasury rates. Since this is a taxable obligation, they're looking at the taxable rate for the United States government. Of course, they can print money. We can't at the county level. So, there's a spread that's added to that. And unlike a mortgage where you would just go out and have a 15-year or a 30-year, we're actually chopping this into individual annual amounts. So, there's a one-year maturity that someone buys, a five-year, et cetera. So, exactly like you said, the weighted average here is 5.88% that we're showing on this slide. And then you could see the resulting expected savings from that rate. Hopefully, that answers the question.
Yes. And so, does Stiefel get paid? I haven't looked into this. Does Stiefel get paid on the spread or a fixed amount for handling the transaction?
Yes. Stiefel is compensated based on the size of the issue. So, the rate that we're trying to... You know, the 5.88%, that is a rate that we're ultimately trying to minimize for the county by going out to investors, going through every investor and trying to find those that will provide the lowest possible rate. But Stiefel is compensated based on the size of the issue. That's how we compensate salespeople that are involved with selling the issue and writers that are involved in the sale as well. I don't know if you... Hopefully, that's helpful.
Okay. Supervisor Miller?
No, I think that... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That answers pretty much my question. Other than what day are you going to make this decision? I mean, at some point, you say it's a go or it's a no-go. I mean, you and I had a short conversation in the hallway earlier. And so, when is that date? And what is... Is that the ceiling that you're going to use as 5.881? What if it was 5.89?
Yeah.
You know, I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking.
Very good question, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Miller, members of the Board. We've been kicking this around with staff, right? Because we've... Rates are down today, luckily. The 10-year Treasury is down to 373. I think it even popped up to 4% at one point yesterday. So, we got a little bit of a reprieve. And we're all singing our prayers, if you will, with regard to the market. So, as far as that decision, it's a good question. We're going to be continuing to communicate with staff on this subject matter. And one of the things that we've kicked around, been talking a lot about, is at what level of savings is efficient for our county to proceed? And we're still talking about that. I think what we'll do, we'll continue to bring staff up to speed, and we're going to pick a savings threshold, whether it's 13 million, it might be 15 million. I'm talking net present value savings. And then we'll pull the trigger only and if we hone in on that level of savings. And I think we've got a few more for meetings, a few more meetings to have with regard to where that number might come in. So, you know, back to our calendar here, you know, the next couple of weeks is going to be pretty critical. And I know staff will keep the Board informed, and we'll come to the Board on the 27th to give you an update. So, I hope that answers your question, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good, because it's just there's a point where it doesn't pay.
Yeah. You know, it's funny, is we all got spoiled, right, the last couple of years?
Yep.
Even us that went out and got a mortgage. Remember the mortgage money? I think I got mine at 2.78% money. I got really lucky. We had 3% mortgage money. And when we'd issue bonds for our clients, when we issued your new money bonds, if you remember, I think we were 2% and 3% money, remember?
Yeah.
And markets move fast, as you guys know. So, we do our best to tee things up, to get a lot of work done, be opportunistic, and pull that trigger if it makes sense. And that's what we're going to do with you guys over the next, really, 30 days or so.
And similar to a house mortgage, if I may interject. I mean, if this went on in three or four years and rates went down, we could just refinance it. It'd be like refinancing your house.
Yeah.
There's a cost to it, I understand.
Yeah.
But when it's prudent, you could actually do that if you wanted to.
Yeah. With our municipal bonds, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, if you remember, we put that call protection in there. So, with our municipal bonds, we don't have that, quite the flexibility we do with a mortgage. So, we have to... So we have to balance that call protection with the interest rate.
Yes.
But at any rate, yeah.
Yeah, I would just add, so the structure that we're showing on this page, Mark was talking about the call protection, typically 10 years. So we have a bond that goes out 20 years. The nice thing with these taxable bonds is there is an opportunity to refund that before 10 years has passed. There can be a cost to that, but after 10 years, you would have the option to go out any day if rates were lower and refinance that liability.
Which we saw in the 80s.
Right.
Right. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none. Okay, there's a public hearing piece to this. I will open the public hearing. Anyone, just anybody from the public, would you care to speak? Going once, going twice. No one from the public. We'll close the public hearing. This was information only. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Chairman, just for the record, the clerk of the board office, we did receive the two comments, which has been shared with the, the board.
True. And they're in the record, yes. All right. Thank you very much. Item 18, discussion approval, disapproval of a lease between Penal County, the landlord, and Thunderbird Fire District, the tenant, effective August 1, 22, I'm sorry, August 1, 2022, for the property located on North Ralston Road. Mr. Ortiz?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Joe Ortiz, Penal County Public Works Deputy Director. This item is a lease request for Thunderbird Fire District to utilize Penal County property for a fire station and administrative purposes. There was a previous lease which expired in 2020, but they've been utilizing this space continuously to, from this point, from that point. And as soon as we found out, we wanted to get this back to the board, to get that cleaned up, to make sure we legalize the tenancy on this one. The term of the lease is for one year with auto renewals for each successive year unless terminated by each party. The rent is for $1 per year. And as additional consideration, the Fire District shall provide the county at no cost emergency fire response and suppression services for the Penal County Public Works Hidden Valley Maintenance Yard. And also, the district will continue to make this property available for, as a community building. The district will pay all utilities and janitorial services for the property. And two FY-type items, this is a regular agenda item, but it does not require a public hearing. And also, per the Penal County Attorney's Office, it was determined that this does not require unanimous vote.
Very good.
With that, any questions?
Any questions from the board? Seeing, hearing none. All right. I would then ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve item 18 as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Number 19, discussion approval, disapproval of a rental agreement between the state of Arizona by and through its Arizona Department of Transportation and Penal County to occupy the property located at 121 West 22nd Street Florence. Mr., Ah, Hattie, Sturgill, how are you? Yes, you're not Archie.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. This agenda item is just for the renewal of our rental space that the facilities, Facilities Management Office currently presides in off of 22nd Street. It's just going to be a renewal for a five-year term with an option of two additional five-year terms for renewal. Our lease was up in May, and we started negotiations immediately with the Arizona Department of Transportation to try and move forward with a renewal lease. That's really all I have. It also does not require unanimous decision either. So do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions from the board? Seeing, hearing none. I'd ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 19 as, as presented.
I'd like you to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Opposed, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Sturgill. All right. Item 20, discussion approval, disapproval of the request to create new job classifications to meet the current staffing needs of the departments. And we have Ms. Shepherd, how are you today?
Great, thank you. Chairman McClure, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager. Today, we're seeking your approval to create four new classifications. As a brief reminder, these positions were sought in the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget development process, and funding has been allocated. However, because no current classifications exist in the Penal County classification structure, which align the essential functions and qualifications for these positions, this step is required to bring this to you for approval to create new classifications. The new classifications are as follows. A Deputy Director Budget and Finance, this position will assist the Director in planning, directing, and coordinating the activities of the department and function as a second in command. A Budget Supervisor, this position will provide support supervising staff and overseeing senior-level professionals in the Budget Office, responsible for promoting financial health, optimizing the allocation of resources, and working to maintain fiscal responsibility throughout the county. As you are aware, recently, the county consolidated the Budget and Finance Departments into one, and given the restructure and upon review, these positions are being sought to support effective management and sufficient bench strength to maintain essential services and support critical succession planning. We're also asking to create the Classification of Library Supervisor. This position will manage and provide oversight of a small branch library for our library department. And finally, the creation of a Sex Offender Registration and Tracking, a SORT investigator in our Sheriff's Office. This civilian position will assist in managing sex offender registration and notification and compliance with Arizona revised statutes, along with providing professional-level administrative and investigative support for the Criminal Investigations Bureau. This position will relieve our sworn officers from performing duties not requiring peace officer certification. Your approval would be appreciated today. If you have any questions, I am happy to field those or department representatives are here today.
Are there any questions from the board? Oh, wow, hearing and seeing none. All right, I would ask for a motion then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 20 as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Item 21, is discussion of board members' requests for future agenda items or reports to be presented. Does anybody have anything they'd like to have on a future agenda? Ah, Mr. Miller, of course.
Not of course. I rarely do this. Well, I just want to ask, and I'm sure it'd be an agenda item, that these code enforcement or these hearing officer cases be heard in front of a, the Board of Appeals, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, Board of Appeals rather than us. I know there was discussion about that. Where are we at in that process, and can we put that on an agenda and talk about it?
Yes, we can, and we've even had discussions on the side about that, so that's good.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And any other items on a future agenda? Well, we cleared the room, pretty much. I mean, okay, so hearing and seeing none, we will move on to the next thing. I would ask for motion to convene into executive session for items 22 and 23.
Twenty-four.
It doesn't say that. I'm, hey, I'm reading the stuff you put down for me. 22 to 24.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go to executive session on items 22, 23, and 24.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none. We're in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.